Same venue.
Who's that?
A diaper couple. That was a diaper couple. You were there. Oh.
So we don't have to do chairs. We don't have chairs.
Hey, what you got? We're in the chair. We're in the chair.
We can ask you to slide for just a second.
Come on right here, George.
Yeah. 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 I said my son lived in High Springs from here. Not at all. That's Dustin Road. Dustin Road lived in High Springs from here.
He used to go to, uh...
Really?
He used to go to Gator Dockside.
I was trying to remember his daughter's name. She was here. I banked her.
Oh. Don't do not say that. Do not say that. I banked her.
Yeah. Yeah. A little more.
All right. All right. Uh... We're gonna go ahead and get started. All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is August 25th, time is approximately 7:00 PM, and I am calling the City Commission meeting to order. Uh, first item would be the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So do I.
All right. Motion in a second. Uh, any discussion on the agenda? Any discussion about the agenda on, from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimous. Uh, we're gonna invite Pastor Joey Glanzer up to give our invocation, followed by, uh, Commissioner Mark Clark, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can stand, please do, and remain standing.
Gracious God, we come here this evening filled with gratitude. Gracious God, we come here this evening filled with gratitude that we live in a place where we can come together, no matter color, creed, or culture, and speak freely. It is truly a blessing we take for granted at times, and, Lord, we do know what a gift it is. Please remind us that our community is made up of all varieties of people and to respect each other as we are all your children. We pray for peace in all corners of the world, and for those who live where there is no peace, we pray you comfort them. May your light fill the hearts of those making decisions tonight on our behalf. May they see truth and justice through the lens of your divine grace, for it's only with your love that we can work through our challenging time. Help them keep their eyes focused on what is best for our community, and it's in thy precious name we pray. Amen.
To the allegiance due to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, both of you, on that. All right. As we get back to our seats, we are going to, uh, continue with, uh, Ms. Joey Glanzer to give us an update on the opioid task force. Uh, this is a first item, and actually only item under our presentation, as we do not have the city clerks swearing in ceremony tonight. Uh, she is out. And I should've said earlier, Commissioner Maison will be joining us shortly.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I heard there's some COVID going around, so that's kind of, uh, too bad. But good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for this time tonight. I'm gonna try to work this, uh, machine here. I'm not used to it, but, um, we're gonna... Oh, I'll have to turn it on first here. My... There we go. Well, anyway. Well, I'll start talking if they can figure that out. It's just some pictures of what we've been doing the past few years. But I'm here with other opioid task force members, and I apologize, I didn't see if any of them are here. Oh, is it working now? Okay. All right. There we go. Um, I'm here with other opioid task force members to see, need to give you an update on the activities and progress we've made in the past seven years since you set us into action. The purpose of the task force is to educate the public and raise awareness about the opioid epidemic that gripped our community and our nation. To give you a quick recap of why the task force was created, it all began sadly when our mayor at the time, Jordan Marlowe, was also a high school teacher at NHS, and he lost a student to an opioid overdose. It shook him to his core, and he was shocked to find out that Elatcho County was actually number two in the state for opioid overdose and deaths. At that time, he made a declaration that our city should do something, anything, anything to make a difference and create an all-out assault on these numbers. I was Commissioner at the time, and having experienced the devastation of addiction firsthand with my son, um, who... There was a video, but it didn't show up this evening. But, um, I was eager to join the team and help declare war on opioids in our community. And I'm sure each one of our task force members have their own reasons for the passion they've given to the mission. And on that note, I want to recognize the fact that all of those original task force members that you appointed are still doing it. It's, uh, it's rare to find people stick to it that much, but they made the commitment, and they're still here doing it. Uh, they include Jordan, of course, Na'am Urchin, Sherri Jones, Tiffany Castle, and Mark Modus. We've also had volunteers over the year, years, and we appreciate them as well. So the short, short video you were gonna see is a culmination of efforts over these many years, and it is the beginning of a campaign I'm excited to tell you about, which kicks off two weeks from today, Monday, September 7th. It's one of the reasons we wanted to present the update tonight, particularly to get, to let you know how we all got here. The campaign is called HOPE. It stands for Health and Opioid Prevention Awareness. I'll go... There is it right there.
December 7th?
Yeah, uh, the September 8th, Monday. And, uh, starting September 8th, you will be seeing billboards all over Elatcho County, north, south, east, and west. There will be social media presence focused on reaching young people, especially those who are vulnerable to the allure of opioids. And there will also be public service announcements on radio and TV. You won't be able to miss hearing the message that we've been putting out. This campaign, it's funded by the $250,000 pot of money paid out from a lawsuit against Big Pharma, who perpetrated the delusion back in the early 90s that opioids were the solution to all pain and suffering. It turned out to be the beginning of the tragic opioid epidemic, which has claimed hundreds of thousands of lives. The Sackler family was the face of that pharmaceutical company and was ordered by the court to pay over $7 billion to raise awareness and educate the public on opioid abuse in the USA. And that dovetailed right into what we had started here with the Newberry Opioid Task Force. So when our share of the money came to the county, it's thanks to this Newberry Opioid Task Force that they were able to receive it, because one of the prerequisites was that the county or the government entity that received all that money had to already have a committee set in place that was doing the work to raise awareness and educate the public. So the county called Newberry. To make a long story short, the county's Children's Trust became our umbrella organization so that we could operate on a countywide basis and include all nine municipalities in this onslaught against opioid abuse. So thank you, Commissioners. Because of your compassion and vision, this campaign will be kicked off in two weeks. But our activity doesn't end there. Over the past seven years, we've been busy in Newberry. If you've been to any festival, health fair, or drug take-back event, or other awareness-related activities, you've seen our bright yellow tent, where we have been able to distribute Narcan, give away tons of literature, and on occasion, sit down with an affected, um, individual who's either in addiction or the family of those in addiction. In addition, one of the first goals of the Newberry Opioid Task Force was to get the Rad Kids program in every single elementary school in the county. They say you should aim high, and I think this one really caught everybody by surprise. It blew me away as I realized how much money it would take, the commitment and pure guts it would take to achieve this. At the time, only McEnopie, and I think one other elementary school, had the program. And Rad Kids focuses on zero victimization, and it's presented mostly in first and third grades. But going through this year, year, one-year-long program, children learn how to protect themselves from harm and from bullying. They raise their self-esteem and build self-confidence. All of these traits gives them the personal armor to resist the peer pressure once drugs are introduced to them. Carrie Gallup is the head of the program locally, and I'm very happy to tell you we're within reach of attaining our goal. This year, more than seven elementary schools were added, reaching over 1,000 students. The Newberry Task Force's role in this was to introduce it to the entities who would need to support it, and we did countless follow-ups to those entities to keep it in front of them and at the top of their vision list. The task force also hosted many events in our community. The Silence to Solutions Series features a community member who's been affected by opioid abuse, whether as an addict or a family member of one. We invite them to come and tell their story, because it puts a face onto the sometimes-otherwise faceless demon that we, that's among us. We're also a resource for Narcan distribution. Narcan is a life-saving, over-the-counter medication which is used to revive an overdose victim until paramedics can get there. It's a nasal spray. It's over the counter. It doesn't require any prescription. And we advocate for its presence in every single medicine cabinet. I have a supply with me here this evening if anybody would like some. And aside from the designated work of the task force, a chapter of Naranon was spun off in Newberry. Naranon is for family and friends of addicts who meet, they meet weekly to support each other and to follow a 12-step program to help them maintain their sanity amidst the insanity of addiction around them. It's actually the only Naranon program in Elatcho County. The nearest one is, I think, Marion County otherwise. So that's the basic wrap-up of our current activities in the Newberry Opioid Tasks, Task Force. Early on, our mayor now, I remember you said, "We want boots on the ground. We want to see action." And I hope you can see that there has been action, and over the seven years, it's been extreme. Are our efforts making a difference? We may never know. But if one person hears our message and takes the other door, it'll all be worth it. Statistics show that there's a gradual, even if slight, decline in overdose deaths in recent years. In 2023, a report, um, a report said drug-related deaths in Florida has decreased by 7%, and opioid-related deaths have decreased by 11% compared to 2022. Credit's given partly to some of the new policies enacted to combat substance-related outcomes like the Florida Prescription Drug Act Reform Act in 2023. But we believe, in closing, we believe the most effective way to influence those in your orbit remains being aware, being educated, and being ready to motivate when you're sus, when you're suspect, when you suspect something has changed with your loved one. You are the closest one who can detect those subtle changes when they occur, even before the addicts may know it themselves. The goal is to keep them alive. Don't give up, and don't stay silent. They are worth it. Thank you so much for your continued support.
Thank you, Joey. You should absolutely be proud of the work that you guys have been doing. I know it's, it's a lot. Uh, $7 million doesn't really sound enough, does it? Very good. Well, uh, we'll move on to, uh, public announcements. These are basically your two-minute, "Hey, I got this going on" type of, with my group, uh, announcements. Uh, if you're here to speak on a particular item, uh, at, after every item is, you know, discussed here on the board, you will be able to have more time to speak with it as a public. You'll hear me ask for public comment on all of those. So, uh, not seeing anybody run into the microphone, so I'll assume there aren't any, uh, public announcements at the moment, going once, going twice. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, items that are commonly passed without really a vote or discussion, uh, very administrative, more than anything. Uh, any, uh, anything regarding that? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Or, I'm sorry. That's what I went to ask you before. So moved. That's what I meant to do. Yeah. A motion in a second from Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Farnsworth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. So skated it out to, uh, number six, second reading of the Mayor's Youth Council Ordinance, Legislative Second Reading of Adoption Ordinance 2025-15. And Mr. Attorney, are you ready to read?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 2025-15, an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, creating Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 1, entitled Mayor's Youth Council, Order of Ordinances of the City of Newberry, creating the Mayor's Youth Council, outlining procedures for the selection of officers, filling vacancies, requirements for meetings and minutes, setting duties and responsibilities, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. The appropriate motion is to pass ordinance number 2025-15 upon its second reading by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. It's a pleasure of the commission.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Farnsworth on the motion, Commissioner Clark on the second. Uh, any discussion? This is second reading, so it's the second time that we've actually seen it up here. Uh, and this is the establishment of the Mayor's Youth Council, initiated by our own Ann McGee back there in the, in the AV booth for us. So, appreciate your help on that. Uh, any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the public about this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, number seven is the final fire assessment rate adoption. Uh, this is a resolution. We'll have the attorney read into the record as well, and then we'll hear a presentation from Assistant City Manager Dallas Lee. Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution of the City of Newberry, Florida, relating to the provision of fire rescue services, facilities, and programs in the City of Newberry, Florida, amending and restating the final assessment resolution, providing authority, providing definitions and interpretation, confirming the amended and restated initial assessment resolution, re-imposing the fire assessments against assessed property located within the City of Newberry, Florida for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, approving the assessment role, providing for the collection, providing for the effect, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Appropriate motion is pass the resolution as read.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, would you mind if I'd just give a little bit of context before Mr. Lee gets started? Um, I just want to, we have a new commissioner, and for the public as present, I wanted to remind everybody what happened last year. So last year, we had a new fire assessment study done. That fire assessment study was based on one year, and we had one business that was an outlier that year and really spiked the numbers. So the commission called timeout. We called the study into question, and we asked staff to go back and do a multi-year study so that we could amateurize that out, right? And so that's what we did this year. So we did a three-year study, uh, and that has brought significant increases down to still significant increases. But instead of nine times more of the cost, now we're looking at something that's closer to three times the cost. But what is also true that that study revealed is that we simply have more commercial business in town, uh, and those commercial businesses are calling for fire service more frequently than they were in the past, which I think is to be expected as your commercial industry grows. But at this point, the study that you have in front of you is not based on one year that could be called an outlier year. It is based on a three-year study that's amateurized over the course of that time. So I just wanted to set the stage. I think that was a, uh, a flaw that the commission rightly pointed out last year. That flaw has now been fixed. So the numbers that you have in front of you are based on the natural growth rates of our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Lee, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners. As the manager mentioned, we'll be discussing the, uh, your final fire assessment adoption tonight. Your recommended motion tonight is for you to set the final fire assessment rate for your fiscal year 2026 and adopt the resolution presented before you. As a reminder, that this meets two of your strategic goals that you've adopted in your strategic plan, uh, the first being to protect our community through a professional and responsive fire department, and the second to provide equitable and sustainable sources of revenue for long-term financial stability. So as an overview of the fire assessment, uh, the fire assessment is a charge that the city imposes against real property that pays for fire protection services. The funds raised through your fire assessment can only go to fund the fire protection portion of your fire department budget. Uh, we cannot use fire assessment to fund anything else except for, uh, fire protection within your fire department. That includes, um, advanced life support. We can't use fire assessment for the paramedics. We can't use, like, uh, fire assessment for. It goes towards, uh, BLS response and, uh, fire protection. Uh, case law shows that fire assessment has to provide a benefit to property above and beyond what ad lorm taxes may provide. And again, it can only provide fire service up to the level of first responder. Uh, case law also says it has to be fairly and reasonably apportioned. Uh, you can't, uh, pick and choose which categories of, uh, taxpayers will pay a higher or lower, uh, portion. It has to be driven by the service demands of those classes. The city's fire assessment exempts government properties, tax-exempt properties, in our case, primarily churches and schools. Uh, and then it's also, uh, your fire assessment provides a hardship assistance program for those residents, uh, who need to use it. So your current fire department funding, uh, about 54% of your fire department is funded through property taxes. Uh, the next largest funding source is the fire assessment at just over a third. Uh, following that is your fire services agreement with the county, where the county pays for our fire department to respond into, into the county. Uh, a number of years ago, the commission had set the goal of, uh, the fire assessment funding half of the fire department's, uh, expenses. Uh, as you can see, we've not been keeping up with that, uh, policy direction from the commission.
Dallas, before you leave that slide, so if you've been following our sister city to the north, one of the core issues that they're having in funding their fire department is the county built a fire station close to their community. And so their fire service agreement, which is virtually identical to ours, um, is being slashed. Uh, right now, there is no conversation about the county building closer to Newberry, but that conversation could happen at any time. And one of the continuing narratives that we're gonna talk about tonight on this agenda item are all of the fluid situations that the state of Florida, Elatcho County, are putting the City of Newberry in. So, right now, roughly 10% of the budget is when we answer a call in unincorporated Elatcho County, Elatcho County pays us for that, and that is 300...
865.
$865 each call?
Yes.
So...
Fire only.
So fire only, if they respond, is an 800...
What was the number? 65.
865, just for one time, one-time call. So if the county decides to build a fire department closer to us, we could be in the same boat that High Springs is in if we lose a significant portion of that budget. I don't know that that's gonna happen, but again, one of the continuing narratives is, how does this board prepare for the future when so many uncertainties are looming over our heads? Thank you, Dallas.
Um, so one of the first steps in developing your fire assessment is we look at what's called the assessable budget. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, the only, only things a fire assessment can pay for are our fire response, uh, up to the first responder category. So what we have to do is take your entire fire department budget and to figure out how much of your budget is assessable to the fire assessment. So for your fiscal year 2025, uh, budget, your net fire department budget was about $2.3 million once you less out other revenues. Of that, about 75% is assessable, uh, for fire assessments, about $1.7 million. That is how we calculate all the fees, uh, based off of that total assessable number. That total assessable number, if you calculate it, uh, doing the math of how many residents we have and the number of calls, comes out to the $419 per resident, uh, maximum amount that the commission can charge. That is the amount that the commission voted to adopt as the highest rate that it can set this year. I understand it's the commission's intent not to set it at $419, but that is where that, that math came from. Uh, just so the commission's aware, your operating budget in your fiscal year 2026 budget for the fire department is just a, just a little bit over $2.6 million. Uh, that's the budget the commission gave a head nod to last week at our budget workshop. Uh, as the manager mentioned, this year we looked at a three-year call data, uh, three-year period for call data versus the last time we did the study, which was more than a decade ago. As you can see, there's been some shifts between the different categories, which is driving some of the changes, uh, as well. So if the commission adopted the same fire assessment rates as it did last year, you'd still see increases and decreases in some of those categories as the demands for services shift amongst those categories. Um, so again, uh, once we have the assessable budget, uh, we take the number of calls that each, uh, category generated, and we basically just divide it across those calls and determine how much, um, each category should pay for the service demands. Um, so, uh, this year, we came up with those categories of 71% for residential and et cetera for the other categories. The key point here is the commission cannot just change one category. If you lower one category, all other categories lower. If you lower one category, all other categories lower. Commiserate, if you increase one, they all increase commiserate. The commission can't just decide to increase the institutional fire assessment without also increasing the other fire assessment. Everybody has to pay their fair share. So again, the maximum rates that were calculated were the $419 per resident and corresponding square footage charges for our non-residential categories. Those were the numbers that were noticed tall of your residents as the maximum amount the commission can set. Again, tonight, you're going to set what you would actually like that assessment to be. As we discussed in your budget workshop last week, your 2026 budget is balanced at a $300 fire assessment that fully funds your fire department at that 50% mark the commission has been aiming for, as well as keeps the general fund balanced with all other with the current budget.
Mr. Mayor, I want to be clear that the $300 rate scenario, all of those looming things, and for the public certification, the governor has said that he does not want firemen to work more than 40 hours a week. That means that they work one day on, three days off. City of Gainesville has already gone to that. Now, that's at this point is a strong recommendation from the state, but at any time could become an unfunded mandate. This this budget that's in front of you tonight does not have anything put away for that scenario. If that scenario becomes an unfunded mandate halfway through the year, we don't have revenue to pay for that. I also want to be clear that the 300, we've been talking a lot about when will we need a future fire station? When will we need future engines, those kinds of things? Our best crystal ball guess at today's growth rates, looking back over the last 10 years' worth of growth rates, put us needing that next station somewhere between five and 10 years from now. I want to be clear, this budget does not put anything away towards that goal as well. So I don't want there to be an expectation or a misbelief that a $300 fire assessment not only takes care of today, it also helps us put away something for tomorrow. It does not. The 300 doesn't even quite get us to the 50-50 mark. It gets us back to in the ballpark, in the ballpark. We staff believes that a $300 recommendation is already a significant increase from 200 to 300. We hope that the public remembers that we have not increased in the last two years, and the two years before that were very marginal increases. But I do want to be clear for both the dais and for the public that at $300, we are not getting ready for tomorrow. We're just taking care of today. Tomorrow is coming, and we will have to deal with it, but we're going to deal with tomorrow tomorrow. We're just going to try to get through today, today.
Mr. Manager, it's a great segue into my next slide, which is the history of our fire assessment since 2020. In 2020, our fire assessment was $175 on the residential rate. We increased it $15, the next year $190, and $5, and $5. And then since 2023, the fire assessment has stayed the same at the $200 mark. At one point, it was the commission's direction policy that we should increase about $25 a year. Had we been following that policy direction since 2020, we'd actually be at $300 already for your fire assessment and proposing to go to 325 this year. Some impacts on property owners. Big caveat here, this is really rough math based off of what I could find on the property producer's website, so nobody hold me to any of these, but this gives you a relative approximation of the difference between fire assessment and property taxes. So this chart is showing you what would happen if you adopted the the $100 increase in your fire assessment, or if you tried to recoup that same amount of revenue through your property taxes. So if you wanted to raise the same amount of revenue through property taxes instead of your fire assessment, you'd need about a half of a mil increase. So what this chart is showing you is the difference between the the fire assessment increase and that half of a mil. As the manager mentioned, it's all very fluid and complicated, especially on your commercial side. Your commercial has multiple different rate classes, as well as it being based off of square footage, not value. So you have some areas where you may have a very large square footage, but you may have a lower value, so you end up paying a higher amount in fire assessment than you may may realize. Particularly, the RV storage has a lot of square footage. It's relatively low in value, so you're going to see a higher assessment than property tax there. Publix, where they're more close, you see a $10,000 increase in the assessment versus a $7,000 increase in property taxes. Some of our smaller retailers, $600 in the assessment versus $40 in property taxes. Dollar General and Inspired Energy, big differences there is one's retail, commercial, one's industrial, even though they're relatively similar in size. So you see that the Dollar General, even though it's smaller, pays a higher fire assessment than Inspired Energy. But if you just went with a property tax increase, they'd only be paying about $200 more in property taxes. Another one that I didn't get a chance to put on the slide here, but Argos, for example, has relatively small square footage, but it has a lot of value. So for Argos, if you're trying to recoup this through property tax increases, Argos would see a $77,000 increase in their property taxes, whereas on fire assessment, it's a only a few thousand dollars. Moving into your residential, we have three cases here, a low, average, and a high, just so the commission knows, your average residential unit here in Newberry has a taxable value of about $290,000. So that's that average. At a low of $200,000, the fire assessment increase that is proposed before you is $100. If you tried to recoup that for property taxes, it would be $100. The average resident on the fire assessment increase would be $100, but a property tax increase, which would recruit the same, would be $150. And then a higher end house would be $100 fire assessment increase, and then a $200 increase in property taxes. So it just kind of illustrates for you the difference in how the assessment collects revenue versus your tax assessments. One of the things I know the commission is always looking for is that diversification of revenues, making sure we get a little bit from everybody. This does help shift some of that burden into your commercial.
Mr. Mayor, this, first, I want to say thank you to Dallas because this slide, you generated these numbers off of a commissioner question at the last workshop, said, well, what would it look like if we just paid for the whole thing in millage? And this is just the difference between the $100 or the half mil, right? But what this slide is showing is that if you, the more you do in millage, the more it costs the residents. The trying to do the balance between the fire assessment and the millage balances out equally, not equally, balances out among businesses and residents as well. But if you go down on the fire assessment, what you're doing is shifting the burden from the businesses to the residents. So if you did the entire thing in millage, then the residents would be paying significantly more. A few of our businesses, the large businesses like Argos, maybe Syntex, QuickCreed, those would be paying significantly higher in property taxes. But each house sold resident would also have to pay more. So doing it through the fire assessment is actually a benefit to the residents because it shifts the burden off to businesses.
So again, staff's recommendation, what your budget's based off is a $300 fire assessment. Again, for our residents listening, the notices you got mailed to you and your trim notices show a $419 fire assessment. So this is more than a quarter less than the notices you received in the mail. Again, that's staff's recommendation. As a reminder to the commission, we have a number of debt payments that the city is making for the fire department, mostly for equipment that is funded out of your fire assessment. One question came up the other day about when we were going to pay off the engine. That engine is scheduled for payoff in October 1st of 2030. So that would be the first big thing that is coming for payoff. We do have the Fire Chief Command vehicle that's scheduled in 2027. However, it'll be due for replacement shortly thereafter.
Mr. Mayor, just another moment of context here, because some of you guys have been on that dais for a long time. 15 years ago, when I was first elected as a commissioner, there was, and this is not a joke, there was a rock holding the door of the fire station closed from the outside. And so what that tells you is that previous commissions, before the majority of this commission, they failed to address the needs of our fire department. This commission set a goal 10 years ago of saying that you guys were not going to do that anymore. But what that meant is that because a generation of commissioners before had kicked that can, you guys have basically rebuilt a fire department in the last 10 years. You've had to replace the equipment, you've had to rebuild the fire station, you've had to do a tremendous amount of work to get our firemen up to a pay scale that makes us competitive with the fire departments around us. And that's that you should be committed for that because you've had to make up ground, right? And I think in a microcosm, that's what we're having to do now. Since we had two years of no increase at all and two years of a $5 increase, this year, we're having to face a $300 increase, and that generally flies in the face of what we've done in other departments. We tried to go up marginally a little bit so everybody has a chance to adjust. We failed to do that. I blame the previous mayor. But now that we have failed to do that, now we have to catch up, and this is causing problems. And your staff feels it as well. Most of your staff lives in the city, and we're affected by the exact same rates that you guys are passing.
Mr. Mayor. Quick question. On that quinn, wasn't it that we were mandated to, we had to get rid of, or get, yeah, we had to pull it out of service? Is that correct?
I'm going to ask the fire chief to answer that question, but there are some, for our ISO ratings, there are some mandates.
My understanding.
Yeah, the time down.
I believe we couldn't, we no longer could service the latter on that former quinn. So the latter portion was unusable.
Yeah, I had a several questions about that.
It was.
They're timed out.
We bought it in 99. We were close, whatever the state, when we were buying that thing, I remember.
It did not keep up with the service demands.
I made your headache.
Yes. I believe the manufacturer of some of the parts no longer existed. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dallas. Okay, what other questions do we have?
So this is the biggest thing, and we've got to do this. We fielded a bunch of phone calls. I think we've done the best we could, or I know I have, to try to get with staff, city manager. We've been talking and discussing this thing all week. What would be the cost if the county came in here and charged our citizens and we didn't have our own fire department? How many millage rates?
Mr. Mayor, so the county would not charge a millage rate, they would charge a fire assessment. Their fire assessment is different than ours, so I can't speak exactly. However, I can say in most cases, it is higher than what our fire assessment is proposed to be.
So it ain't a millage rate, it's just an assessment like we have?
Correct.
Okay. But we don't know what that is?
Mr. Mayor.
It's pretty high, though.
Well, it depends on each house. There's, theirs is not a flat fee, so it changes by case by case.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager.
To that question as well, though, first off, there's, there's nothing that says that the county has to come in and take over. It would be a negotiation. We would have a lot to negotiate because we have brand-new equipment, a lot of that equipment still has a debt service payment. But I would equate it to the MSTU and what this board did with law enforcement. So you guys right now have a contract with ASO at $1.1 million. That's about 1.4 mils. If you were still in the MSTU, you'd be paying the county 3.5 mils. So that if the county takes over our fire department, they, one, their rate is higher, but also you don't, you lose the control of what they set year to year, and they would have to know. So I do believe that the county could probably run our fire department marginally cheaper than we can because they have so many economies of scale. But one of our problems is there's not another department. So we have to have four people on shift all the time. If we had multiple departments, stations in Newberry, it opens up possibilities to have three men, or three firefighters at a station, and then you can respond according to the call with what's warranted. So, but I do not believe, and I listened to the High Springs meeting, and I do not believe that if you hand it over to the county, that just saves your residents $2 million. The county is going to get pretty much what it costs us to run.
How do they do that?
They do it through the, is it MSBU?
Yeah, it's their version.
Which is very.
Which is higher. And they have to know who's participating in that. And once you're in, you're in. And your ability to get back out.
I just wanted a comparison for call savings, even though we look like we're going up, what we have, what we offer, what is the comparison?
And it's higher. It's higher.
So I'll also, I'll also add that my apologies, because I had put out that some of the $300 would contribute towards an additional station. So that was my mistake. I'm wrong on that.
Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, having been around for a few years here and heard prior commissions deal with the situation of the fire budget, you, if you turn over your station to the county, you also lose control of the service. And that's been a big item for our city and our city commission, is that we have a very, very high-level service. We have the best firefighting services of any small town around. And city commissions for many, many years have dedicated their resources to our fire department. So, and I've seen personally situations where cities have turned over their firefighting services to a county. County takes the equipment, then they, they take over all of that, and the city doesn't have the same kind of service that we have.
But I also believe too, Mr. Mayor, through the staff that, and the chief sitting here, that we wouldn't have got what we had this week when schools opened, or two weeks ago when schools opened. We wouldn't have the things that they do in our downtown. We wouldn't have the things that this is a, this fire department does things in this community that nobody in the county is just going to do for free. Everything's a cost. This here is just run on a personal level with this city, and it is a pride of this city, even though these numbers are showing something that's, that's high. We are not doing the four-night team. We do want to come down, but we also have to fund the budget for the firemen. And if we go to the mandated one and four, we really are going to be hurting. So that's, I mean, we really are trying here to do what's right for the citizens, what's right for the businesses, but we got to make a decision.
Mr. Lee.
Mr. Mayor, some quick, quick Googling. If the city were to join the county's fire MSBU or their fire assessment, residential house at 200,000 would pay 270-ish dollars a year. A average resident in Newberry would pay $357-ish a year, and a high-valued home at 400,000 would pay about $450 a year in fire assessment.
Tremendous amount more, Mr. Mayor. And I think, again, I go back to the MSTU and ASO. The only benefit is if you guys cancel that contract, our residents would pay 3.5 mils, but it would be 3.5 mils that come from the county. So it'd allow us to hide that, and we could lower our by 1.2, right? But our residents would still feel the pain. And I think the same thing happens here. If we go down on the fire assessment and you have to go up on the millage, then the residents, it gets lost in the millage, but they end up having to pay more. And this is the effort, which has always been Newberry's dream about getting more commercial, is as the commercial comes, it eases the burden on our citizens.
Understood, understood. Well, obviously, we went through a lot of information here. I don't want the public to get the impression that we're just trying to predispose the fact that you, trying to sell it to you that we've got to increase. I think it's more about trying to bring you up to speed because a lot of people here are kind of here for the first time, maybe just kind of join the conversation. So hopefully, this kind of brings you up to speed with a little bit of what we're dealing with. There's more that has been discussed here, you know, particularly like in the budget meeting last time. But I want to just start with public comment, if you don't mind.
You know, I'm all in favor of fully funding the fire department and, and taking care of it, but I have never really been in favor of the fire assessment fee, so I don't, don't support it. I don't think it's a fair fee. But I have nothing against the fire department. I fully believe that we need to fully fund it, so just to get that out of the way that I do support the fire departments totally.
And Commissioner Farnsworth's record does support that. He does, he, he always votes against the fire assessment, so yes, he does. Okay, so we'll turn to the public, have an opportunity. What you want to do, just from a procedure standpoint, is just come up, introduce you so we can get your name on the record, and then you are open to speak freely through the chair to the commission. So direct your comments, you know, at me, you know, as just part of form. And we don't bite, we don't do any of that stuff, so I want people to feel comfortable coming up and, you know, saying what they want to say. Yeah, and so you'll, everybody will have two minutes, and that green light will be on, that's right there on the front, on the front of the podium. The green light stays on, and then, was it at 30 seconds, it turns yellow?
We're giving them one minute.
Okay. So it'll yellow, be yellow at one minute. So you'll be at halfway when the yellow light comes on. And we'll let you finish your thought if you're at, you know, there you go.
Hello? Yes?
Yeah, just bring it down a little bit, too. Yeah, that's fine. Yep.
Hello, my name's Beth Fernandez. Good evening, everyone. Since I'm limited, I'm going to rush through this. Currently, 54% of our property taxes and 36% of our fire assessment fees fund 90% of the fire department budget. It appears that the goal is to remove as much of our property tax contribution as possible and replace it by raising our fire assessment contribution to the max assessable budget allowance, which is this year is over 1.7 mil. This is not only concerning, but it's problematic. The presentation that was made indicated that the fire department had 567 calls for service in the years of '22, '23, and '24, which is about the same as the 215th study revealed. However, residential calls decreased by almost 3%, yet you are considering a over 100% increase in residential fire assessments. Maybe I don't have this right, but 567 calls in three years breaks down to 189 calls of service per year, which breaks down to about three or four calls a week. Looks like the 2025 fire department budget is $2.5 million. So with three to four calls per week, that seems a little excessive. Maybe some creative thinking or viewing through a fiscal microscope is in order to save some costs that are being passed along to us. I know it's not popular, but contracting may save money. I know he spouted some costs, but we don't have them. So that might be a way to save money, and I don't know about impact fees that all this development's going on. I mean, I know that impact fees can be used for infrastructure, including capital expenses associated with the fire department. Every year, we receive increases on property taxes, ad valorem and non-ad valorem listings. Excuse me. The majority of Newberry has very limited services, but every year, our costs go up. I would urge a very meticulous review of the fire department budget, consider alternatives, and discourage any increase in fire assessments as it doesn't seem warranted. It looks like even keeping the assessment same would net $80,000.
We average about 1,400 calls a year. That fluctuates up and down by a few dozen. In keeping with the national trend, we're 75 to 80% medical calls, and the study extracted only fire calls. That's structure fires, brush fires, vehicle crashes, machinery entanglements, things like that. Because the assessment can only fund fire-related activities, it can't fund anything EMS-related.
Okay, so the funds we're still paying for is 567.
Let me move on, we can come back and, yeah, if you have some additional questions. Yes, sir, go ahead.
How you doing? How you doing? I'm Tommy Allen. I'm actually a part of first responders. At this point, this is not my first budget hearing about money need to go somewhere. Y'all can hit me with the numbers, all it is. When we get the budget, when they talk to our department, we don't have nothing. I'm not against fire department getting stuff, but it's just at this point, it seemed like y'all getting the numbers, finally getting them right, and now we're paying for it. And I don't understand, when I hear about these budgets, I go to briefing, we hear about budget, but yeah, I'm told I can't get equipment, I got to buy my own stuff, got to buy my own badge, because, oh, we ain't got nothing in the budget. So I don't know with this fire settlement, all this stuff, I moved it to the city because the other city was doing the same thing. Now I'm in this city. city was doing the same thing. Now I'm in this city, been 10 years, and like she said, we keep getting increases. But now, all of a sudden, something not getting paid right. So I'm not really all, all against it, but it's just more like something need to be done better to keep our services going the way they supposed to, especially me being one that works in these services. And that's all I got to say.
Hey, my name's Glenn Hyde. Just quickly, wanted to come up and make a statement. Sounds like a lot of the funds are strictly going to be used for fire. Is that correct? So we're not getting an advanced life support of any kind out of this? Is that correct? I'm understanding that.
The, the funds will go to fund the fire department as a whole. We're a multi-service agency.
Okay, so we do have ALS.
We just can't assess for advance.
Do we do transport in Newberry?
We do not.
Okay. So, city of Newberry does not transport, so ALS, they're just going to be on scene, which is obviously really important. From what I'm understanding, the county, I think, is eminently going to come out here one way or the other in my lifetime. I think that's just going to happen as Gainesville continues to grow, the city, or the county continues to get more populated. I think that we're better off waiting until that happens. I don't see a future where we're spending more money here in Newberry for, for a smaller fire department is going to be more efficient. I just think that the dollar's going to be, excuse me, better spent going to, going to the county. And they're gonna, they're gonna come get their money one way or the other, and I'm not going to have a say in it. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Jason McGee, citizen. I wrote some thoughts down. Good evening, commissioners. I'm here tonight because many, because like many, my neighbor, many of my neighbors, I'm concerned about the sudden and significant increase in this fire assessment. We all value and depend on our fire department. Their service is critical. But the way this increase was handled places an unfair burden on our residents, the small businesses, all at once. What frustrates me the most isn't the size of this jump, but this could have been avoided. For the past several years, we have made very small or zero increase. If we had gone up, like when I was on the dais, we had all, I mean, I know you can't tie a commission's, future commission's hands, but we had all agreed, if we go up $25 a year, then we wouldn't be in the mess that we're in today. And it just, when, when I heard about this, it just, it really, it really disappointed me. And I just wanted to come on here and, and, and say, I'm, I'm, this is one of the few times I'm, I'm really disappointed. And, you know, there's, there's two things that, that I think, I think you guys should do. One is to commit. I know you're not going to all be up there, but commit to that $25. And, you know, I mean, we're going to have to do this. I, I realize that. But you guys that are sitting up there, commit to jumping at $25. I mean, we had the same problem with our water and wastewater back when I was, when I was on board. The rates hadn't moved, and we had to make significant jumps. I think we should also look into ways to lessen the burden on our citizens. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alina Cole. I recently bought property here in Newberry a couple months back. I got the letter, very surprised. I manage 10 units that are low income, so profit margins are less than zero. To get this kind of bill, which in my case would be over $3,000, was tough to swallow. As someone who manages my own budgets, and I think most people may have some budget of their, their own, I mean, we all know that the average American cannot afford an unexpected $400 bill. So it seems, and I'm going to piggyback off the previous person, that it seems irresponsible to suddenly put this burden when it was very foreseeable that this was going to happen. And it shocks me that we are hearing that we are going to need more investment, and there's no talk about that. And the reality of the fact is you need more than $300 per person. Because what are we going to do in a couple of years when you need more equipment, a new fire station? And Newberry is growing faster than any other city around. So the reality is way more calls with way more citizens. And so it seems more like there's more kicking of the can. And then on the topic of having a budget, I agree that, or I feel that, I'm sorry, that shouldn't be a separate fire assessment. It should be part of the taxes, property taxes you pay. And it, maybe you guys could clarify why, why it is more expensive to be, have it part of the property taxes than to have it part of this special assessment? Because if you're trying to budget, most people have a mortgage. So you have your, you have, you escrow for these costs within the mortgage. And it's a much smaller amount than suddenly getting a $300 bill that you've got to pay out of pocket. Thank you.
If you do have escrow, it would be part of your escrow normally. And it's, and I didn't want to give you the impression, I know you, you said you're new to town. It wasn't zero, and then we're talking about it going to 300. It's been 200 the last two years, so it's just kind of a little perspective. Mr. Russo?
Hi, good evening. Todd Russo. I'm here to represent Ultimate Boat and RV Storage, Belarus. The assessment we have right now is going up 400%. We're at the 13 cents per square foot. And I was here last year, negotiated the same thing. I don't want to have to come back every year and, and say my piece about the fire assessment. We have 119,000 square feet of storage. Most of it's canopy. We're being charged at the 13 cents for everything. I'm agreeable to the enclosed paying a fire assessment, but to be charged on the whole building, the whole property, our bill goes from $4,000 to $17,000. And our front office pays 50, almost 47 cents, which is, you know, it's a 4,000 square foot building. So that's our issue, is a 400% increase in our fire assessment. So if we can look at how we, how we look at our property, maybe that's one of the issues. But I don't know if that can be changed at this time. It was a, we talked about it last year, but that's our concern. Thank you.
Can I ask a question even? I know it's not rebuttal here.
Sure.
But Russo, was that 4,017 based on the four-night? Fire assessment or 300?
I don't know about that.
We're on commercials, we're 13 cents per foot.
It was the four-night.
But they're, they're still related. So the number that Ms. Russo is mentioning is the number that was noticed in the trim. So, which is 419, which has its commercial counterpart. So, well, the commission is not on the table anymore. So 419 is not on the table. What the commission is, is considering right now is 300. So it would not be a 400% increase. It'd be moved from 200 to 300, not 200 to 419. So there, there's the confusion. Whatever we do on one, as Ms. Lee said, we have to do across the board. So if we go up in one category, we have to go up commiserate in every category. If we go down, we have to go down commiserate in every category. You have to treat everybody based on the percentage of calls.
So we're at 13 cents a square foot, I believe, on that chart. And that chart was wrong. It only said $7,000. I don't know.
That's the, if we went to the $300, the $300.
Oh, okay. 419 is off the table. 419 is off the table. So it's still, right.
So, big increase. One other thing, this is a very important discussion, the staff, not with Mr. Russo. So the people that have different places in the industrial category, this industrial category, can it be changed over the canopy versus the enclosed building? Or is it, we are industrial, on those sections can't be changed?
Think that's a very interesting question that would take a fire assessment expert to answer. When you get into fire assessments, there's residential and non-residential. There's three categories in the non-residential, right? Now whether or not you can, you can pinpoint that, I think that would take an attorney and probably a judge to, to answer that question. I'm certainly willing to pursue that question. I think it's a fair point. But at the end of the day, when you get into all of these things, impact fees, fire assessments, the primary goal of the city is not to get sued. So we try to do it by the book, exactly how we're supposed to do it, try to be fair and equitable to everybody, and do just what is approved.
If I'm not, do we actually even get to make that call? Or does that come out of the property appraisers' office?
Mr. Mayor, you are correct. We, we have to use the property appraisers' data. So the, the enclosed and unenclosed is not available to us. It is purely square footage that the property appraiser gives to us as assessable value.
Would that, if, for people who are in that situation, is that, do you know if it's sort of, I guess, addressed similar to like the value adjustment board or something like that, where they kind of go and?
You could certainly appeal it to the value adjustment board, but if your square footage is your square footage, the value adjustment board, I mean, it, square footage is your square footage, I think.
Seems like that.
Based on pavement, Dallas concrete?
That would be, that would be the property appraiser. I'm not sure.
Not every, fits in the same box.
But every business owner has the same value, has the same right to go and make that argument with the property appraiser.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just in the same business, so I wanted to answer a few questions. My name's Susan Belts. My husband and I are partners with Todd Russo. And I can tell you that we went before the value adjustment board because our taxes have gone.
You speak in the microphone, if you don't mind.
And we actually kind of went through, we were educated, but the county considers our taxes, they're based on our sales tax information. So what, what we generate in income, and then what the state of Florida collects in sales tax is how they kind of back into our assessment. Yep. I can, trust me, I got a lot more than I cared to know about how taxes are calculated. But I don't think it has anything to do with our square footage specifically. And I can tell you that Ocala Barracuda Storage, they, they, their taxes are not calculated based on square footage. And I think there is, I would encourage you to consider whether that's appropriate from a fire perspective.
Are you, are you saying that the Marion County property appraiser does a little different than the Lash?
I think they do. I think they do.
I got you. I got you.
I think their fire assessment is less than $2,000 compared to the $17,000 that we were facing with the first assessment. And we're, I mean, I think from your slide, we're paying more than public's. I can guarantee you that their income is far more than ours.
Thank you. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
For sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Who was that? Oh, yes, sir.
I would like to point out that the fire assessment on homes, it doesn't matter whether you have a $100,000 home or a $500,000 home, you still have to pay the same rate, which I don't think is a, is a fair way of, of doing it. So.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'll, I'll also kind of piggyback on that. This is not a, an easy conversation for any of us. Nobody up here has expressed to me, you know, hey, great, I'm glad we're able to, you know, go up to $300. This is, I don't know, kind of a adult conversation, I suppose, with having to face some mistakes that we made with not going up the last couple of years. And I'll take ownership of that as well. I was sitting up here when we didn't increase it over the last, last couple of years as well. So I don't want you all to get the impression that we arrived at this $300 discussion in the budget meeting last week very easily at all, because it, quite frankly, it sucks for all of us. And I think the only thing that might have made it a little bit easier if we had been going up to $25 all along. And, you know, rightfully, we have kind of learned this lesson, I guess you could say so to speak here. But I don't know if we're coming in for a landing here to get a motion or not. Commissioner Maison and then Commissioner Coleman.
Yeah. Hey, everybody. Hey, so to the unfairness that Monty was saying, Jason, so if it's a 62, or 4,000 square foot home versus a 800 square foot home, how many firefighters will, will you get more firefighters going to a 4,000 square foot home?
Everybody gets the same response, no matter what the, the size of the residence. Response is based on the nature of the call.
I know. I'll, sorry. Commissioner Coleman? Are you done? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Coleman?
All in all, after looking at the budget, and I know some people who, I don't know, they might question it, but it's for the fire department and not building another fire department. All in all, we got 23, 2.3 million dollars that's got to be paid. I mean, that's, that's inevitable. So we got to look at what's the most fair and equitable way for our citizens to take care of, you know, they want their fire department, I'm sure. So I guess where I'm coming at this is, what is the most fair way to do it? We, it's, I mean, y'all can come in here and put money in a pot. We all got to pay it. And, and that's my question. I've been waiting on somebody to come up here and say, why don't we do it this way? Because I'm, I'm baffled.
We've looked at it a lot, different ways, for, for sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I will say that the previous answer to the commissioner's question, that's where the balance of 50/50 came in. At 50/50, 50% of it being paid with the fire assessment, 50% being paid out of millage, it, it spread it sort of, everybody has skin in the game because Commissioner Maison is correct. It doesn't matter if I'm in a $50,000 manufactured home or a million-dollar brand-new house. The same number of people, the same number of apparatus, the same level of response, response to it. So this way, everybody's paying part of it. It is also this commission's desire to diversify the revenue stream so that we're not having to go all on in one category completely. As the numbers that were presented to you tonight show, if you go up in the millage, it ends up costing the residents more. So I, I hear Commissioner Farnsworth, and he has never wavered from that position. But under that philosophy, the residents pay significantly more for the fire department. So this balances it between commercial and residential, that 50/50. I'm not saying it's a perfect solution, but it gives everybody a little bit of skin in the game to another resident. I can guarantee you that your current management will always present you the numbers that it need to be to keep that 50/50 from here on out. That will always be a conversation.
Well, I also, yes, sir. Go ahead.
But here's the deal. Looks like we're going to take the 13% of the calls, which was 74 last year. We're going to put the burden on the commercial people that are providing jobs, taking care of our high school sports. I, I just, I was, I was totally on board today, but now I'm just looking at it going, man, 13% was all they, they had, where the residents had 74%. So, I don't know. I don't recommend to table this and let's, let's, and I, I hate workshops, but I think we need to sit down, and I want everybody to be here. Everybody. I don't think anybody showed up. I know we're in a time crunch with this, but I, I honestly, I recommend to table this. And I want to hear from my citizens, just one time, come in here. And so I know it takes time to get up here, but uh, that's, that's my recommendation.
Yeah. And I'll also, I just kind of wanted to add, although there is the assessment that it says, that is applied to everybody in the same amount, the $200, there are two things. And the other one, the property assessment part of it, does account for the $100,000 house versus the $500,000 house. So there is more being paid by the person with the larger home, the more expensive home. So I don't want us to get tunnel vision and it's, you know, the same for everybody. Because it's, it's not, because there's really kind of two components. There's an X and a Y in the, in the algebra equation here.
Second?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a, a point of explanation to the comment that was just made. No matter what the commission sets the fire assessment at, residential will pay 71.8% of the total amount collected. Commercial will pay 13.05% of the total amount collected. Industrial will pay 3.53% of the total collected. So no matter what the?
That's based on the call distribution?
Yeah. So the commercial is always going to pay for 13% of whatever you collect in your fire assessment.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I, I would also say, I understand the desire to table it. I would say the worst thing that we do is, is leave the instability going. We got a great turnout here. We got a great turnout here tonight. We've had two budget workshops on this. If the commission, and we are under a time, we have got to balance a budget by October 1, so I don't think it's fair to ask people to come out again. We're here, we're still in public comment. Let people come up and, and have public comment, but-
Who else wants to, who else wants to speak?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Come on down. Again, just state your name, the yellow light goes on when you got a minute left.
Hi, my name is Laura Storm. I didn't know about any budget meetings, and I didn't even know about this until we got the letter in the mail. And I'm in the county, I'm considered county, I suppose, where I live, but the city limits extend beyond my street. I live a little north of here. So I'm not, we're kind of in the back, and when you mentioned there were two budget meetings already, there was a lot of ruffle about there because I don't know how we would know, you know? I guess we could come to these meetings, but I just didn't know. So I think one of the things is we didn't know. So I, that's why it came up, because if we knew, we probably would have come.
Okay.
How can we notify public?
Pardon?
They're on our website. We do an email blast to anybody who's registered on our, on our website. They're posted on our calendar, they're posted in City Hall.
I actually have a High Springs address.
I'll just, we'll give you another little bit.
I live right on the edge. I have, actually have a High Springs address.
Me too.
The north side of the road is High Springs, it's, and I got a different area code, I got, but-
I'm with you.
We were zoned for all these Newbury schools, but then when I tried to, like, get online or, I never could access any of the meetings, I'm, I'm thinking it's because of my address, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, the-
So I was kind of surprised when I got the letter.
Certainly the website doesn't know where you live.
So we got to go to the, so I guess I just don't know how to access things-
Understood.
-for this stuff.
Understood. Well, we, we do have a city email, which you're able to, we can leave with us, we'll add you to the, add you to the list. But, I mean, we notice everything just like every other municipality does. The, the letter that you got regarding the fire assessment is just like the one that you get for the trim notices. So that just kind of goes out every year. And I, I've heard from plenty of people, they thought it was, hey, this is a bill for $419. It says on the top, if I'm not mistaken, this is not a bill.
Not a bill, right.
Kind of like the trim, kind of like the trim notice, but it's obviously created, even trying to speak to it a little bit more, as much as I've done on, on social media, for instance, is, is just not been, not been enough, but thank you for your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Coleman?
I just want to clarify to the audience that the reason I'm wanting to have another workshop, we've had two, is I really just feel like that the citizens, I don't know, that everybody has a situation. That's the reason why then you can be, and you can come up here, we'll be in shorts, sitting around in a round table so you, everybody can talk and there's no bunch of time and all that, time limit. But I just want to clarify, I'm not kicking the can down the road. I think that everybody should have a voice.
Yes, sir.
All right. Ken Aisling? I almost feel like I'm at the Boston Tea Party. City Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry, you're the city mayor, I'm sorry.
No, I'm the, I'm the mayor.
Oh, you're the mayor, okay.
Protocol is talk through me, but-
I'll talk through you.
We, we, we're a little loose on that sometimes.
When I received the warning in the mail-
Okay, okay.
I'll call it that. I'm being charged for two dwellings.
Okay.
What is a dwelling?
You have, I believe you get a letter for the, for, per tax parcel, but do you have two?
Well, I thought a dwelling is where you live.
Sounds like you got a bigger question here, just get, cut to the chase.
Well, the question is, I'm being double charged for two dwellings. There's only one dwelling on the property. The other is just a building with storage stuff in it, so.
That might be a little bit more nuanced than I can answer, I guess, I'm sorry.
Obviously. So that's why I feel like it's the Boston Tea-
You would be to get with the property appraiser to get that handled.
Do you get, do you get double taxed on your regular property assessments?
They, they bring the two together as one.
Okay. Yeah, if you've got a special case, I would say just-
Yeah, but who do I contact?
Yeah, property-
Property appraiser for the county.
Yes, sir, yes.
Sorry, what?
Ayesha Solomon is the, is the property appraiser.
Solomon, okay.
Ayesha Solomon.
Ayesha Solomon. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Who else we have? They're both, both tied. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is-
You can bring the microphone down.
My name is Anita Barion. We live in Newbury Hills. I just would like to know that we, did we send everybody a letter regarding this tax?
Yes, ma'am.
Because we live, the next neighborhood is like a 200 houses, belt. When we arrived there, it's all wooded, and now it's all houses. But for us, as a retired people, we have a budget in our own, and to receive these more taxes is kind of overwhelming. And anyhow, I just would like that this budget is being prorated to all the residents around Newbury or North South, whatever, which I don't understand, but anyhow, I just would like to know that we are all being addressed to this, because we asked neighbors and some didn't receive any letter.
Yeah.
Yes. So that's why for us to pay for 119, it's like a lot for us, especially that we are retired, we're living on fixed income, and, and we're just thinking, why this next neighborhood is very big, 200 houses, big houses, and they have all this improvement done and we don't have in our side, so why we are paying this amount of money? So that's why I just would like to know that we should address this to all the residences, so we can actually divide and prorate the amount, because it is only for the burden of you, it's for the burden of the whole county, or Newbury City, whatever. But that's what is my question.
Yes, ma'am. So the answer to your question is yes, everybody does get paid, and it, we're, it's not been discussed anymore about it being, charging you $419. The discussion coming out of the budget meeting last week was to increase it from the current 200 to 300.
Okay.
So it's an increase of $100 over the course of the year, and, but yes, if you have a mortgage that's escrowing your property taxes, it would be part of your tax bill, so it would be, I think it's like $8.30 or something per month on your escrow. That's, the context of the discussion is going from 200 to 300 on residential. The commercial and institutional is different, but to your point about the residential, it does go to everybody.
Right, yes. Because if I have to think about it, when we, when we hear the cost-
Yes.
-around us, the whole Newbury or whatever, Newbury City, this will not cost us a lot, because we have a lot of people coming in now here.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, you know, so that's why our taxes should not, never be like increased drastically that we cannot afford anymore. So that's why this, I, I attend the meeting.
Understood, yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I'd be happy to talk with you about some of the other stuff that would be related to more residents coming in, but we can do that afterwards.
Yeah, but, you know, you have a lot of people now here, so I understand that-
Thank you.
-a lot of people now will share the taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
One more, she had her hand up, so.
Hey, I'm Brandy, and I've spoken with Tim about this fire assessment before. I'm sure y'all have read the comments. I suggest that we move from that regressive tax where we all pay that 200 right now and move it all into the millage. That way, when we get our deductions for homestead and what other ever deductions there are, it's a function of how much we can afford to pay. Like, it's not just unevenly set across the board, and I understand you said that 50% of it is in the millage. What's stopping us from putting it all in the millage?
Nothing particular, but you didn't see, you weren't here when we were doing the graph, were you watching online?
I was watching online.
Okay, so you know, you know how that potentially does affect residentials.
As far as the millage rate goes, I just, the .02 decrease would leave our city, you know, like a $100,000 deficit if we, I don't know why we're lowering that since overall people's taxes would still be increased if you account for the rollback. So I don't know why we're, for instance, that .02 would make my taxes 10 cent less a year, but I'm still paying that $200 regressive tax in the fire assessment. And you talk about you need $2.3 million for this fire station or whatever. I have a good idea where you could get that $2.2 million from, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brandy.
I didn't see that, huh?
Miss?
I'll say it now from what we-
Had one of, one of y'all had a comment?
Yeah.
When she was coming up?
It was Monty.
Thank, thank you, Brandy.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Farnsworth?
One of the things I was really kind of curious about is with all the development that we've had in the city of Newbury, with all the commercial development we've had, with that income coming in, in fact, maybe we got another thing tonight for 159 acres for more residential. We got some commercial property that we're supposed to be working on, approving tonight. So with all that additional funding coming in, do we not, still not have enough money to run the fire department? Because the cost of the fire department does, would, doesn't seem like it'd be as much as we're having, coming in the revenue.
Thank you for the comment. You have a response, or?
The only thing I wanted is just to repeat what we talked about at the workshop. I know that the growth rate of Newbury feels like more, but we built and permitted 189 houses, so that's 189 homes paying the fire assessment. 189 homes does not cover the cost increases. Now, the fire assessment that we presented to you tonight does shift with those commercials that come on. It shifts it to more of the burden to the commercial. As you've heard from the business owners, they believe that it shifts it too much to the businesses, right? The residents probably have the opposite view, right? They would rather shift more to the businesses. The more you go, the more you take away from the fire assessment to do a millage, the more you're shifting it to, and causing the residents to pay more. So it's a, that's, as Commissioner Coleman said, however we get there, we've got to pay the fire assessment, or we got to pay the fire department budget. We can do it in millage, that puts more of the burden on the residents. We can do 50/50 with the fire assessment, that shifts some of that over to businesses. The question that you guys have to answer, and it's a hard question, is what is that balance? How much do the residents pay versus how much should the businesses pay? If the idea is to invite commercial in to lessen the burden on the residents, what staff has presented to you achieves that policy goal. It's just about whether or not you want to shift it or adjust it one way or the other. Again, you can shift it a little bit, but the cap for the millage, if you shift it too much, we would have to immediately advertise again, we'd have to go, send out trim notices again. Think it costs us about 75, 74, 75 hundred dollars to send a notice to every single parcel owner in the city of Newbury and to recalculate those numbers. The people who are here today, I don't know if we have more businesses in the audience or residents in the audience, but this is one of these situations where you're just not going to make everybody happy, because it's going to come from one way or the other, unless you, what you want to do is direct staff to spend the next year negotiating with the county, or unless someone else has another idea, which staff is always open to listening
Hey, Mr. Mayor, appreciate you letting me speak. I think we got a, a great Newbury Fire Department, and I'm all for keeping the Newbury Fire Department. They do a great job on all the stuff. I think we've got a great staff and really good commission, but it looks like to me, you know, we could get, instead of worrying about how much everybody's paying, let's try to get this budget down. We need to doze the budget a little bit. And, you know, kind of like, kind of like what we said, you know, we're, we're adding homes, like I said, 189 homes, we added Publix, I know we added a building. There should be enough money coming in there to, to help offset this. I think we really need to look at that budget number. And, I mean, you know, it's, it's one of the deals, you know, just, just something to think about. I know in our subdivision, you know, we charge HOA, and my HOA people say, well, after the first year, they say, what's going up? I said, no, we're going to keep it the same. They said, well, you can't keep it the same. I said, well, we added so many homes, and we've had it the same for the last 10 years because we kept adding homes to it. I think we need to look at this budget. I mean, you know, I mean, y'all got a tough job, and, but like you said, I think we got a great fire department, I definitely want to keep it. But we got, like you said, staff, we got a new city manager, he's smart, we got all these smart guys. I think we could, I think we need to work on that budget thing, you know what I mean? And, and like you said, we added commercial, we've added residential, you know, we might need to get control of the cost and some of those costs on that thing, and, and I don't know what they are, but you guys are smart enough to figure it out. That's all I got to say.
Thanks, thanks, sir. Trip Northley? Okay, are you all ready to make a motion?
I want to take it again. Just, not being a new commissioner, not having the, not having the experience of seeing why the previous commission didn't go up enough has put us in this position. Going up $5 two, four years ago, then going up no cost has put us in this tough position. I don't think any of us at that budget wanted to go up this rate. None of us wanted to put any more burden on the citizens as it already is a burden on taxes and everything else. But it's hard to say not go up again like we did last year, and then next year, not knowing what the fire department might need, not knowing what the governor may change the, the laws to. So it's a tough call, I'm not, I don't have the answer to it, I don't know exactly everything the fire assessment goes towards as far as making sure the department has what they need, but they do a good job and make sure everything is done, and I just don't want you guys to feel like we're trying to make more work for you guys, more, more cost. It's, it's a tough decision for all of us, and me being new, I'm really like, not really want to go with anything, but not doing that in the first place has got us here. So I don't know the total answer. I would love to go down on the fire assessment, up on the millage, but that means every different property is going to have a different tax, so that means every resident is going to pay a little bit more. It's still going to be a cost, it's not an easy decision, I want everybody to understand that it's not something we want to do, but it's something we put ourselves in this position previously, not being consistent, which is something we trying to do more of everywhere across the board, to be consistent. So you're not feeling that brunt of, of, of cost so, so sudden. So I just want to say that.
Thank you, Commissioner Long. Yes, ma'am. Just state your name, and again, two minutes, the yellow goes on at one.
Yes, sir. Sherry French. I won't get up here and beat a dead horse, but I would say one thing that you should consider, and I think everybody understands this, is if you go up on the business, it's just going to get passed back to the consumer anyway. So if you decide that you're going to go up on all these commercial places out here, ultimately, they're going to pass it along to us, and it's still going to cost us all in the long run. So what I would say is I'm curious to know why the permitting process takes so long and why it takes so long to get more commercial properties, like Wingstop. What, what is taking so long for them to come in? Like, they haven't even started doing the stuff in the Plaza to be able to come in. So at the end of the day, it seems like the only solution is to, to not just build more houses, thank the Lord for Trip North Fleet, but for us to get more commercial property out here so that it does help lessen the burden on us, not just say, well, we're going to increase it on the commercial side, because that'll get passed along to us ultimately anyway. The other thing is, I would say, please, don't even remotely consider giving away our fire department, and then on the same lines, please do not consider a police department and stay with the sheriff's office, because you're not going to get the same level of service, and people don't understand that until they see it in other places.
Right.
And then the last thing I'll say is for everybody, that myself also, who had trouble, you know, I don't live on Facebook, so I don't see a lot of the things that happen. If you send out emails, it goes to junk- If you send out emails, it goes to junk email. Consider getting a texting option so that basically when you put it on the city's website, it sends out a blast text to say, hey, this document is on our website, or hey, we're having this budget meeting so that people can get a text notification, which is way more reliable than an email option.
Jordan, how do they get signed up for the texts?
We, we're going to add that. I thought we offered that. We do do the blast emails. We do the utility stuffers, but we'll look into seeing about the, I know we did it for hurricane response.
We have emergency reverse.
We have emergency reverse, but it's not, we don't have that service all the time. But it is, it's just another, it's another expense to pay for, right? But I think it's a good.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Mayor, just for the record, Wingstop has not actually made an application. Our turnaround time for application has actually reduced considerably since we got a new planning director. So, I mean, they're turning around residential in 24 hours of business and 48 hours. So when people get us a complete application, our turnaround on that application is tremendous. But Wingstop has not submitted an application.
So it is on, in your example, it's on Wingstop. They haven't contacted us. Commissioner Coleman?
Okay. I've got this number today on the average home to, on the average home, take, let's see, it's a half, half a millage, would average, on the average home would be $145. So for us to be at 300, we're going to be a little over one millage, which is probably we're going to be at a one and a half millage per resident. If you're in, I'm assuming an average home would be 250 to 3 something.
About 290.
290 to, so if it goes in your millage, just think, think about this, guys. If it goes in your millage, it's going to be around seven and a half to eight. Am I wrong, Jordan? Or Dallas?
If you, if you replace the entire fire assessment, I think we'd be pushing 1.5 mills. 1.5 plus 5.9, 5.88 is 7.6.
Mr. Mayor, are you talking about the entire millage or just the fires?
If you replace the entire fire assessment, you put it all into mills, which I think is about 1.5 mills. If you added that to...
The average.
He just wants to know the millage rate.
Oh, 7.38.
7.38. Which would take a, even at half a mill, it would take a super majority vote to pass. I would say to the commission, without, without changing much right now, again, it's this policy decision about how do you want to distribute this cost? You could go to 275 on the fire assessment and you could leave it at the 6.01 and it would virtually be a wash in terms of the budget. You would be shifting some of that cost to the residents. You'd be alleviating some of that burden off of businesses. You wouldn't have to renotice. You wouldn't have to...
Well, Mr. Mayor, the point I'm trying to make here, if you go, if you, if you, if we got rid of this fire assessment, you, and you're sitting at a $300,000 house, wouldn't want it to be in millage. You would not want it to be in millage. You would want this because it's sitting at, am I numbers right? I'm pretty, yeah, anything over a $300,000 is going to cost you more than where we're at right now.
Taxable value.
Keep that in mind.
Taxable value.
And I don't know that I have ever in my lifetime seen millage go down. I've seen assessments go down, but I have never, and I worked at the property appraiser's office for almost 15 years. It never went back. Even when you call it a rollback rate, it still ain't going back. That is not true. So we're between a rock and a hard place, fellas. Mr. Mayor. My football coach will always say, it's time to punt.
We need to, we need to do something. We need to make a decision. So what's the pleasure of the commission? Do we want to accept the recommendation at 300 or are we offering something else?
Let me, Mr. Mayor, is there any numbers that would show us right now? If you've got them, Dallas, with the 6.1 at 275 or the 300 at the 5.8?
I think we have numbers at 275.
Do we have anything that would just give us something that shows that?
Do we have a slide for that, Dallas, or we just have it to report?
I'm just kind of wondering residential, commercial, where we're at with that? What, what, what's it going to take the residents up if everybody?
Hold on one second, Dallas.
I want to say something else, too. I took this line item by line item and I, I'm going to say staff has, looking at everything, because the first thing I was wanting to see is, is there a fire truck in, excuse me, a firehouse out here? And I ain't talking about firehouse subs, uh, which I want one. But the, the deal is, we've cut a fat hog here. I, I do not see in here the pork.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't see it. It's, looks like it has been cut as low. I know we had Mr. Northfleet saying we need to, might need to look at that. Well, dag gum, I, I've been in banking for a long time in my life and I, I didn't see anywhere where we could, I mean, and a lot of this stuff is mandated by the state that we have to have it. Because I wanted to come up here and go dag gum, Dallas. You know what I'm saying? Look here, let's cut this. But we went through it. It's terrible. That's all I got to say.
Have you looked at the recreation budget? Have you looked at the recreation budget?
I'm not, I'm talking about fire assessment is what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the fire department.
So we had a question from Commissioner Clark that Mr. Lee's at the podium. Between the two of you, who wants to go? Okay. Assistant City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, if the commission were to adopt a $275 assessment, it would be $275 for residential, 31 cents per square foot for commercial, 9 cents per square foot for industrial warehouse, 28 cents per square foot for institutional.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's where we would have been at if we would have had $25 increases, am I correct?
You would have been at $325.
Well, that's a no-brainer.
So Dallas, give me the, Mr. Mayor, for Dallas, let me, give me the 300 number again, Dallas. On the commercial, industrial?
It's for commercial, 34 cents. Industrial warehouse, 9 cents. Institutional, 30 cents. So it's a 3 cent reduction for commercial, no change for industrial warehouse, and 2 cents for institutional. And $25 for residential.
Mr. Mayor, to, while people are calculating...
The tax deduction rate on the 275 to what?
It would take you to just over 6 mills.
About how much per resident?
I'd have to do the math for you real quick.
While Mr. Lee's doing that math, to Commissioner Coleman's, I can't remember the exact amount, but we cut significantly out of the fire department. We cut $180,000 out of personnel this year and I, that one really hurt because I believe the chief is right with that recommendation. We cut a lot of capital outlay out, which is again, kicking the can. These are things that we are going to have to have eventually. So we did go through this. The fire department understands that this is a big line item budget and, and it was not a pretty budget cycle this year. We've gotten it down as much as what we can get it down to and still meet the state stand date, state mandates, which are ultimately the, the most binding factor here, right? So we all know that we are trying to get LEOs, first responders, living wages. We have a three-year rate salary schedule that is mandated that we have to adhere to. Overtime for fire department is clearly a significant expense. A lot of that you just can't get away from when you only have one station with four people on. One person gets sick, calls out, gets injured, that becomes a line item budget. So I understand and I agree on all points. We're not, we're not here to disagree. We're here to present the facts of this is what it is.
Mr. Lee?
Mr. Mayor, if you were to increase the millage rate commensurate amount, it would raise the average homeowner's property taxes by $53. You'd be reducing the fire assessment on the residential by 25 and increasing the property taxes by 53.
So the overall, the overall would be $125 impact to residents instead of $100 impact
Back to you guys. What do you want to do?
We don't have any choice.
It's painful.
$25 makes $53. I mean, the little math just don't add up. I mean, it just, besides when you're talking about hundreds, thousands of square feet That, you know, you take the millage rate, you're upping the taxes altogether across the board. If you knock off $25, you think much? $5 or something on the 5.8 is $5 a year from the other night?
Do you want to rip the Band-Aid off?
Rip the Band-Aid off? And, I mean, if we're going to do this at 300? I don't see the other way around. We got to have to get a budget. I would like to know when we do this, if the, is there a way for the categories, the industrial? We said, no, there's no way to change categories. Is that doing what?
The, the, once you're in the fire assessment world, once you're non-residential, there's only three categories.
So they don't?
And this category is the cheapest of those three categories.
Yes. Those aren't up to us.
Who makes the cheapest? Who makes the rate, the categories? The county?
I think that's state law.
Is that state?
State law that creates the categories.
In other words, if we're going to close them buildings under one roof over another, who makes that category? Band-Aid, county?
I think your question actually shouldn't be who makes the category, but who classifies it that way.
Property appraiser.
Classifies.
Classifies it.
The state creates the classifications.
Is that, that was how I was understanding the question as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. State creates categories. Property appraisers decides what category you fit into.
It's what it is. It's a tough decision and I want to, definitely am not here to look at this under a, it's another category. How do you?
I think that would be a Chad Johnson, Senator McLean. We would need state help if that's, open it up.
This ain't, it ain't good for anyone.
I think we would be, I think we'd be a pretty good test case of why this is not exactly the ideal situation.
Well, right. Why don't you don't fit up?
Right.
Well, the point I'm trying to make is, is that with the fire assessment, you kind of, when it comes to fire and the safety of our citizens, you got to want, you got to need. We need this. I mean, looking at it overall, I don't want to depend on Alachua County to bring in the fire department.
No.
And it's going to end up, by every number I've looked at, it's going to cost us more if we said, oh, we're not going to have the fire department. Well, you're going to end up, citizens paying more.
Oh, yeah.
And would probably less, I know it doesn't matter to their fire, our fire truck goes down there, but our high school or going over here to our elementary school and spraying them all down, knocking them down with the water and all that. I mean, all that counts. You know, we got to have it and we got to have what's fair and equitable. So I'm going to make a motion that we go at 300.
There a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. You already had one per, one, one, one per, sorry.
I don't like probably, I mean, this is like a, I don't mind anybody coming back up to get their thing. It's just me. I mean, if this is a hot topic, I don't mind them coming back up.
One, one other thing, too. One other thing. I don't think it's very fair that we got, they're storing boats down here and I can tell you, hell, if a boat's on fire, I can pull half of them out of the way to let them burn, let it burn right there. But those, that category is, something's got to be done there. We need to look at that.
Thanks for letting me talk again, Tony. I appreciate that. I would have a question for Dallas. When he did that .02 increase in the millage, was that the taxable value of the home or the overall value? Because the taxable, average taxable value in Newberry is not at that $300,000 mark.
Overall.
So then the $53 number would actually not be $53. It would be lower than that. Can we figure that amount out?
It's not, it's not...
I think he was running the average.
Yeah, yeah.
What he's doing, the taxable value, yeah, is what I...
It was on taxable value and the numbers that he presented are on the half mil increase that wouldn't be needed if you, for the 200 to 300, 419 is off the table. So two to three would be a half mil increase to generate the same. That's where those numbers came from on taxable value.
Of, of the homes, but the average taxable value in Newberry is not at that $300,000 due to homestead exemptions, veterans, things, or saver homes, or whatever it is. That is not. And for the record, the average income of somebody in Newberry, 200% or below, or below, 50% are at that poverty level or below. So I would hazard a guess, once we factor in everything, that people have a taxable valuable, taxable value less than $200,000, maybe close to that mark. But I actually, I did the numbers on all y'all's houses, so much I would pay versus that. And I did do the math and it does come out better to work it into the millage, not say that that millage, that the taxable value average in Newberry is $300,000 because it's not. It's just not. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a third complaint.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? We have a second. Go ahead.
I know there's a lot of heartburn, how we're classified now, okay? It looks like this is going to pass. I understand you guys are in a tough situation. What I want from everybody in this room is your word that you're going to help us try to reclassify that. We looked at Ocala. Their canopy detached, okay? So we're going to need some help from the county or from the city to talk about how to declassify that. Because last year, it was said that could be done and it wasn't. So ours, we're, we're just shade structures with metal. Open buildings, open things, you know, we're getting charged 14, $1,500 per building out there.
It occurs to me that if Marion County is doing it, then it's not a statewide...
Right. So that's where we need...
There is a difference.
Mr. Mayor, I will commit right now. Mr. Russo sets the meeting. I will attend the meeting with him and listen and advocate on his behalf.
I'll commit to Mr. Russo that I will, I will try to set the meeting myself.
Yeah.
Well, that's where we need help because what it is, it's a classification problem. We all agree with that.
It sounds like it.
13 cents is not a lot of money until you got a lot of square feet.
Thousands of square feet.
Thousands of square feet. That's open air, no windows, no doors.
Sure.
Concrete, metal, built to fireproof.
Any...
So that's...
I think I heard a commitment from the mayor, the city manager for you, Mr. Russo.
That's fair, okay.
I think this is something that really needs to be checked on across the board.
I didn't know, I didn't know it was this.
I didn't either.
So...
All right. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
We, we all learned something.
All those in favor, signal. Miss Belts, where are you? Okay.
You can get on to, on the Ocala, Marion County website right now and you'll see their fire assessment is literally 2000, I think it's like 2138 or something like that. So I think there is a way.
There's got to be.
Yeah. I just feel that way. And then just, I think we're also, I asked Todd, I don't think, knock on wood, we've ever had the fire department come out.
Right, right.
And... And so it's just, it feels even more punitive because we know others in our category are utilizing the service.
Right.
And will not be paying as much money as we are.
Right.
So there's a problem.
Well, Newberry has never shied away from trying to think outside the box or try to set the pace and lead on something that this, this would be perfectly fine.
This don't need to die on the vine. This needs attention right away.
And I would also just say, I'm, I live in the city of Newberry. I'm, you know, I, I'm facing the same assessment, so I understand that and I am thankful for our fire service. So please don't get me wrong, I have many fire, firemen in my family, so I, I know the value. I just feel like, I just, I don't know, it just feels a little icky the way it's assessed.
Tell me about it. Yes, ma'am.
Yep. It's not easy for any of us.
So a roll call vote. Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark, Mr., Commissioner Farnsworth?
No.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Mike? Uh, the motion passes four to one. Okay. Hate to feel like we just stop and move on and forget about it, but we are going to do that. So if you've got a couple of minutes, you want to slide on out of here, we completely understand. Uh, we are on number eight of the agenda tonight is large-scale future land use map amendment for mixed use to one hundred and fifty-nine acres. Uh, Mr. Attorney, could you read the second reading for adoption of ordinance twenty-five oh nine into the record for us, please, sir?
How can you do so, Mr. Mayor? This is ordinance number twenty-five zero nine.
All right, we're going to stand, stand at recess for three minutes.
Providing for a change in future land use classification from agricultural to commercial on certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Newberry, Florida, consisting of 9.7 acres and more particularly described in Exhibit A, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing effective date, the appropriate motion is to pass ordinance number 2025-31 upon its second and final reading.
Mr. Perez, you're presenting tonight. On this one, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jean-Paul Perez, Community Development Department. The request before you tonight is a small-scale future land use map amendment for property consisting of 9.7 acres. This was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board last Monday. There was a recommendation for adoption of this ordinance. Staff's recommended motion is to approve the ordinance on first reading. And the request is to change the future land use designation from agriculture to commercial. The applicant is NV5 Global Incorporated on behalf of Polly Family Holdings. The proposed request is a small-scale future land use map amendment. Current zoning of the property is agricultural A. There's also a companion rezoning application requesting that agricultural designation be changed to commercial intensive, and that will follow this agenda item. Here's an aerial image showing the property. As you see, it's just south of the Equestrian Center. I'm in just east of Highland Park. There's a pattern of commercial development along the State Road 26 corridor. This is an examination of the structures on the property. There's a single-family home and some storage structures on the property currently. This is the current land use in the area, so you can see the pattern of commercial land use along the State Road 26 corridor. Plan development also allowing for commercial development, so you see 1, 2, 3 there. 4, actually, plan developments in the area. And they're requesting for commercial. So this is what the new map would look like.
Jean-Paul, can you go back one second?
Yes, sir.
Staffing observation. Can we change potentially the text color on these that are in green to compare from green to white to maybe black?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. As someone who's partially colorblind, I can't. All that's green to me.
No worries. Please, continue.
Thank you. All right. So as part of the application review, we're required to look at traffic, potable water and wastewater, electric services, solid waste, and parks and schools. This is commercial, so it doesn't generate any parks and schools requirements. And the actual impacts will be reviewed at the time of the development plan application. Right now, we're just considering all the uses that will be allowed within this category and the zoning districts that this future land use category will enable. Staff finds the request consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development regulations. Again, PCB did or the Planning and Zoning Board did recommend adoption of this ordinance, and you have our recommended motion there. I'm available for any questions. That completes my presentation.
What is the pleasure of the commission?
Sir, Mayor.
Coleman and Long. Any discussion on the dais? Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. All right. If you've got something to say, jump in. I'm going to speed us along here. The next one's going to be quasi-judicial. It is the companion application for this property. So all of those who are going to be swearing in and talking, please stand now. And also for the upcoming one, we'll also do on ordinance 2565, the other quasi-judicial for the rezoning from ag, the county ag to city ag, okay?
Mr. Mayor, we have number 12 is going to be quasi-judicial, number 14.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Yes, sir. So number 10, number 12, and number 14. If you are speaking on any of those, please. Okay. So 10, 12, and 14.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? And when you come up to the podium, if you can state your name and for the record, so that we can... Thank you.
All right. So this is the companion rezoning to the property that we just changed the flume map on, and we need to have a reading of this one. 2532, sir?
An ordinance of the city of Newberry, Florida relating to the rezoning of 9.7 contiguous acres amending the official zoning atlas of the city of Newberry land development regulations, providing for the rezoning from agricultural A zoning district to commercial intensive CI zoning district on certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Newberry, Florida, consisting of 9.7 acres, more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing effective date, the appropriate motion is to pass ordinance number 2025-32 upon its reading by title.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walker. This is the rezoning companion. Is there anything else additional you may or may not want to hear from staff? Actually, let me do mine a little script. We're ending a quasi-judicial procedure. This means that the commission will stop being a legislative body and become a judicial board, which means that we must follow certain rules and adhere to different standards of decision-making. Primary rule, we must follow concerned testimony and substantial incompetent evidence standard must be met with the judicial board makes a decision. The standard states the following, quote, "All public testimony will be taken under oath. Everyone testifying will be subject to cross-examination. All documents and exhibits shall be entered into evidence. The giving of opinion testimony is limited to experts. Closing arguments will be limited to the evidence of record." We just swear... Well, we're going to have the attorney read into the record the ordinance, but we just did that, correct?
Yes.
Lost, right. Okay. And we had the swearing in. So before we begin, we'll need to disclose any expert take communications and disclosure whether any member physically inspected the property expert take communications, or any conversations or transmissions of information that may have bearing or influence on the voting member's decision. I'll start with my immediate right, and if each of you could disclose any expert take communications. Commissioner Maison?
No.
Commissioner Long?
No.
Commissioner Farnsworth?
No.
Commissioner Clark?
No.
Commissioner Coleman?
I pitched watermelons there. Way back to 70s.
Fair enough. All right. Hearing from each of the commissioners related to that, I myself do not have, although I'm a non-voting member, just for transparency's sake. So the presentation order for each of these three items tonight will be the staff overview. The applicant present will be able to give an application, staff reports, and recommendation. I've not been contacted by any third-party intervenors, but following the staff report, we'll have public comment for three minutes. Applicant and staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine. Members of the decision-making body through the chair may ask questions of staff, applicant, or any of the other participants. And a final argument can be proffered by any of the parties involved. City attorney will advise the decision-making body as to the applicable law and factual findings that must be made to approve or deny the application deliberations after that, and we will proceed to a vote to approve, approve with conditions, continue, or deny the application. So Jean-Paul, we're back up to the top of the order here, and go ahead and give us your overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jean-Paul Perez with the Community Development Department. The recommended motion from Planning and Zoning Board on this companion rezoning application for the prior future land use map amendment was to adopt this ordinance rezoning of the property, which would be from agricultural A. Actually, I think I have the wrong presentation up currently. This should be for ordinance 2025-32, I believe, which...
We do have the backup. If you...
That's fine. I can go through it real quick.
If you want to wing it, the applicant will have an opportunity to cross-examine if they feel warranted, but...
Certainly. Yeah, a lot of the analysis and presentation materials are exactly the same. I'll just make it very brief. So commercial intensive is the requested zoning category for this property. I've shown you images for the property itself, contextually just the same, and the impacts will be looked at as the development applications come in, which will go through the site plan process or special exception, should that be a category that they choose. And that will be looked at by the Planning and Zoning Board, as well as the Board of Adjustment, which this body also serves as. And so our recommended motion is to adopt this or to approve it on first reading, and then we'll bring it back for a second reading later on. That completes my presentation. I'll turn it over to the applicant so they can speak.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Jean-Paul, where's this one at? That one's not it. Is there a map?
That's the one we just...
It was the one we just...
Oh, it is?
Certainly, sir. Yes.
Okay, because one was 31, and now I thought we were on 32.
Yeah. Do we have the applicant's presentation loaded up?
Yes.
And Ryan, are you taking this one?
Kathy's.
Okay. Come on down. This is going to be the applicant's presentation portion.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, Ryan Thompson with NV5, agent for the applicant. I have my presentation.
Where'd it go?
The blue one.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah.
One that says rezoning.
Mm-hmm. That's the one that Jean-Paul should have had.
You did have it.
That's what Jean-Paul should have had.
Yep.
He didn't have it.
No. It should be the 23125, but it should say rezoning instead of small scale.
There's one up there. You need to go to Office Depot and buy your pen, cheapo.
Well, commission to try to keep things moving a little bit.
It's just frozen.
Okay.
Everything's cool.
Okay. All right.
Family's good.
Family's good. Thank you, friends.
You want to add lib some of it while they try to get the computer restarted?
I will. So companion to the small scale that you just voted favorably on, we are requesting commercial intensive on the property. That's consistent with the development pattern along the corridor. So it's a nine-acre parcel immediately across from the agriculture and equestrian center. So that is a request. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, your strategic plan, as well as the land development regulations. So based on the competent substantial evidence, both in our application materials, city staff's presentation, our presentation this evening, we request your recommendation for approval.
Okay. Is there any public comments? You have to even do so. Ryan or Jean-Paul, did you have any material from the other party that you wanted to cross-examine for any reason?
No, sir.
Okay. Members of the decision-making body through the chair can ask questions of either any of the parties involved. Do you have any questions?
Motion.
Question.
You want to hear a final argument?
No.
Okay. I lost you. You were the motion. Who was the second?
I too. No. I have a question.
Okay. All right. We have a motion on the floor. And Commissioner Farnsworth, your question is of the applicant or staff?
Staff.
Staff, sir. Jean-Paul?
See, Ricky Coleman knows all this stuff, and I'm not nearly as educated as he is. But what's the... When you say commercial intensive, what all does that uncover?
So, great question. Let me... I have not committed that list to memory. I'm going to pull it up on Unicode here. But...
Do you have my presentation?
I should have it pulled up shortly, if you give me just a moment here. So in our code of ordinances, our commercial districts are structured in a tiered fashion. And so commercial general is our least intensive, and commercial intensive is our second most intensive commercial district. So it does allow all the uses that are permitted in commercial general. And I will read you the additional uses that are allowed in commercial intensive. Retail commercial outlets for sale of lumber and building supplies, and outdoor retail commercial display areas associated with sale of said items, service establishments, animal boarding kennels, contractors, building trades, home equipment rental, upholstery shops, commercial recreational facilities such as golf driving ranges. It would be a pretty small golf course.
Do those things fall into our overlay?
Yes. So that first list that I... Sorry, I cut you off.
No, it's fine.
That first list that I read does include some outdoor display. There are... This is part of the overlay, and so there will be additional restrictions per the overlay ordinance.
So if you think about what you could do there, you still have to... All of the overlay restrictions would apply to whatever it is that you are going to apply to do there.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. City manager.
The overlay district does limit some of the things it can do there, but the overlay district is more focused on making whatever the commission approves to go there has to be done really, really nicely. So it speaks to design, I would say, perhaps even more than it restricts what can go.
Mom, you're not going to get a putt-putt, of course.
Any other questions of staff or the applicant?
I'm just having a splash cord.
Any further discussion? Mr. Attorney, could you advise the decision-making body of the substantial incompetent evidence standard?
That is exactly the standard, Mr. Mayor, substantial incompetent evidence, meaning the people that have a lot of initials after their names, like Jean-Paul and Ryan. That's their opinion testimony.
Not Ryan. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimous. That's number 10. Number 11 is another flume adjustment for 2533, CPA 2505. And Mr. Attorney, you want to add into the record? This is number 11, small-scale future land use map amendment.
Mayor, an ordinance of the city of Newberry, Florida amending ordinance number 4-91 as amended relating to the small-scale amendment of the future land use plan map of the city of Newberry Comprehensive Plan, providing for a change in future land use classification from agriculture to commercial on certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Newberry, Florida. More particularly described in Exhibit A, parcel number is 01922-000-000, consisting of 25.11 acres, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing effective date. Appropriate motion is to pass ordinance number 2025-33 upon its first reading by title.
So we're going to ping-pong back and forth between quasi and legislative, and there we're back into legislative. When we hear the companion rezoning next, we'll go back to quasi judicial. So Ms. Hectis, tell us what we need to know.
All right. Good evening. Thank you again for having me here. We have a small-scale flume amendment, ordinance 2025-33, CPA 2505. This is for a future land use map amendment from agriculture to commercial on 25.11 acres. Our recommended motion is to adopt ordinance 2025-33, amending the future land use classification from agriculture to commercial. If adopted, the second reading will be held Monday, September 8, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. This item was heard last Monday by the Planning Commission, and they voted 4-0 in favor of this land use change. Attorney nicely read the parcel IDN. The agent is NV5 Global. The petitioner is IMS 2707 LLC. And there's the parcel. Again, yes, probably a little different color. Might be better. It's the dotted line. Wish I had a pointer on here.
Yeah.
Right where it says 25 acres in it?
What is that for size?
The 202. This is 202 going parallel.
It's right as you come into Newberry, and you go past the city entrance sign.
Just the corner.
25 acres immediately to the north.
Yeah.
Okay.
There it is. This one actually looks a little better, Mayor. It's got the black writing on it here, so it's a little easier to see on this parcel. There it is again. Existing conditions, it's agriculture. This is the proposal, is to take the 25.11 acres roughly and turn it into commercial via this request. This is a summary of the adjacent land uses and zonings in the area.
Let her finish.
And I can answer any questions, but they're on the... Basically, the east side is our urban services boundary. No go, no more. That is our end, right there, 202. Then, if you go east, you have the Destiny Community.
West.
Yes. Thank you. I got it wrong both times.
Go that way.
Yeah, the west. Sorry. Yes, west. Yes. East is the urban service area boundary, and then south you have the Tanglewood Plan Development, along with more agriculture and another commercial intensive. And to the north is agriculture as well. All right. My X is really horrible, but there it is on the end there. That's the parcel we're talking about. But this is that commercial corridor we've been speaking of that's basically starting at the curve where the Highland Park is developing now, heading out east to 202 where our urban services boundary is. There's that Tanglewood Plan Development to the south I showed you, I mentioned, and the church is in between the Crystal Lake and the X.
Are there going to... There's going to be commercial in that subdivision directly across from the X, correct?
Yes. Yep.
Kind of like Highland Park.
Yes.
And the two little pieces in that little cutout are already commercial?
They are. They are. I apologize to the applicant. Does not look like the presentation, even though I sent it over. I only got the two nines, not the 25. So, yes, I know. And I sent it over. I apologize. For some reason, it didn't make it over here. So I think we're going to have to...
Hey, guys.
Do you want me to finish my presentation and then you come in, or do you want to do it now?
Sure.
Okay. We had a little technical difficulty. They had presented... They had sent their presentations over. It was four, the two for the nine-acre parcel you just talked about, and the other two for these... Their 25-acre one did not make it, so we're going to have the discussion without it, I guess.
I have it all committed in memory from the P&amp;Z meeting.
Yes. Yes. That's the most important discussion when we get to the zoning part of it, yes. In the following companion rezoning application, which we'll see here, we'll discuss the potential of the site, the potential for this site based on the zoning. Levels of development impacts to the city infrastructure and services may require improvements and/or other forms of mitigation to include wastewater treatment capacity agreements, which shall be addressed at that time of the development plan when that does come forward. The applicant is very well aware, we've had multiple discussions on this, they're going to need to take special care with need to... With this parcel because of its location. It is the entry parcel to the city. The south is that Tanglewood subdivision. To the north is this parcel. So they're very well... It's also very, very well aware. It is located in the overlay district as well, and will need to adhere to those guidelines, which give them additional guidance as far as development goes. We find this... Staff finds this request consistent with the city of Newberry Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. They want to change the parcel, the 25 acres that we just showed you in the map, from 25, on 25.11 acres from agriculture to commercial. And the staff does find it consistent, as we said before. The Planning and Zoning Commission did vote 4-0 in favor of this land use change, and if it's adopted, the second reading will be held on Monday, September 8, at 7:00 p.m. And the applicant is here if you have any questions and can speak to the land use change.
Do we have the applicant's presentation for the quasi judicial?
No.
Do not?
With our apologies, Mr. Mayor.
Understood. Understood. Okay. So I don't want the applicant to feel disenfranchised in any way about not having the presentation. That's kind of... So... Totally winging in here. Do we have access to the YouTube of the P&amp;Z meeting?
Mr. Mayor, if you will give us a five-minute adjournment, we might be able to go put it on a USB drive and then break it in and transport it in here if you give us a few minutes to see if that's possible. Was it ever transmitted in an email?
Yes.
Okay. If you give us five minutes, we can do that. On this one in particular, if the commission wants to move on, the question here is super simple. Do you see that 25 acres as commercial, right? And then while you do that, we'll go address whether or not we can get it onto a USB-A drive and get it over here.
It certainly does seem more relevant for the rezoning, which is the next item, but that's up to the applicant. What would you all like to do? You okay moving forward on this part and getting the presentation for the rezoning, which was more of the discussion during the P&amp;Z anyway?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If I heard you correctly, I'd prefer to move forward with this one and wait for the presentation for the rezoning.
You got it. What is the pleasure of the board?
A motion with conditions to make the rule.
Second. Is there a second on the motion? Second. And second for Commissioner Clark. We understood the tongue-in-cheek nature of your motion. Nope. No worries. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous, and we'll need to update the clerk when she gets back in about two minutes. So we are in recess for about two minutes.
Two minutes?
Two minutes.
I can't call my wife in that long. Come on, man.
For your patience while we sort through that, we are going to reconvene after the short recess. We are on item number 12, the rezoning of the agriculture to commercial automotive for commercial...
No, we're on three. We're still on eleven.
Eleven. I thought we just passed.
Oh, sorry.
We did 11.
Pardon me.
I'm so sorry.
Pardon.
I apologize.
Hold on, I got it, I got it. Tammy, the number 11, the motion was by Commissioner Mason, the second was by Commissioner Clark, and it passed unanimous. Okay, so we disposed of 11 on the Fluma, and we're on to the companion number 12 rezoning of the same property. And this is quasi judicial. We read into the record, I don't think anybody else knew, came into the meeting. So we'll just skip down to the presentation order, and we will hear from the staff first, hopefully as I drag out this to get it all loaded up.
Did I read the ordinance?
Uh, no, I don't think so. Yes.
An ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida relating to the rezoning of 25.11 acre contiguous acres amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for rezoning from agricultural A zoning district to commercial automotive, C A zoning districts, certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, more particularly described in Exhibit A, providing severability repealing all ordinances in conflict providing effective date. Preferably motion is passed, ordinance number 2025-34, upon its reading by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. All right, so now we'll proceed to the staff overview.
It's nice photo.
And we are under quasi judicial process at this point for this one. Thank you, Ms.
Good evening again. Thank you. Sorry about that. We are here to discuss the rezoning of the parcel that you just discussed the land use change on. This is going forward from an agriculture zoning to a commercial automotive zoning is the request. Excuse me.
Turn it on and off.
I did. There we go. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So the recommended motion is to adopt ordinance 2025-34, amending the official zoning atlas from agriculture to commercial automotive on the 25.11 acre parcel. If approved, second reading will be held on Monday, September 8th, 2025. So I'm just going to recap a little bit. The mayor can, can back me up on the discussions that were had, if you need to. But after two motions that died, and much discussion and concern on the possibilities for the rezoning, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval for a zoning other than C A. So we're going to go through the process, and I'll walk you through what the, some of the issues were. Attorney already mentioned the parcel ID. This is NV5 Global Inc., IMS 2707 LLC is the petitioner, and it's on this 25.11 acres here located on the same location as the map before. And here it is again in Ag, and they want to change it to commercial automotive. This again is that list of adjacent future land uses and zonings, and the additional picture again of the commercial corridor. I wanted to discuss a little bit of commercial automotive, and I think it's important to read what the intent of the district is. It is an automotive category, which includes one district in the city. This district is intended specifically for intensive retail sales and service uses, and is automotive oriented, which requires a conspicuous and accessible location convenient to streets carrying large volumes of traffic. Such activities generally require large land areas. They do not cater directly to appreciable degrees to pedestrians, and require ample off-street parking and off-street loading spaces. The district permits specific automotive oriented uses, which are not permitted within the other commercial districts, and this district serves the entire city. So this is a little more intense than you're used to seeing. A lot of the ones that you get are CG, Commercial General, and CI, Commercial Intensive. This category, as John Paul mentioned earlier, we have pyramid zoning in the city. So what's allowed in CG is allowed in CI, which is allowed in C A. So anything listed in those previous categories are also listed as uses permitted in C A. Here's some of the uses, as Commissioner Farnsworth wanted to know earlier, I have CI on here as well, but here's the C A uses that are permitted. Retail, commercial outlets of sale of new and used automobiles, motorcycles, trucks, tractors, mobile homes, boats, heavy machinery, service establishments such as repair and service garage. Sorry, I'm losing my voice again. Rental of automotive vehicles, truck stops, public buildings and facilities. And as I mentioned before, CI is also permitted. So I took some of the CI's that are a little more intensive and put them in here as other potential uses, obviously not listing all of them. Again, this also says CG is allowed, so anything that's in the lower category is allowed in the upper categories. CI allows for retail, commercial outlets for sale of lumber, service establishments such as car wash, auction house, animal boarding, soundproof, soundproof buildings. Thank you, thank you. Plant nursery, commercial recreation facilities, miscellaneous uses such as express or parcel delivery office, motor bus, or transport, or other transportation terminal. Wholesaling and warehousing on storage use, or storage use in buildings 2,500 square, gross square feet or larger. And then the sales of, sales and service of vehicles limited to those propelled by electric engine. These are scooters and ATVs and things like that. And then they have specific provisions for those types of uses in commercial intensive. And there's the end of the list that they're required to do as far as test driving and repair of any of those items, specific hours and such. Commercial intensive also has special exceptions. Those are listed here. Some include package store, automobile, automotive service stations, service establishments such as crematory, commercial tourist attractions, open area restaurants. These are already allowed in commercial intensive. So they would be allowed in C A as special exception, so they have to come to you for special approvals. We're gonna, this got a little confusing last time, so we're gonna go, I'll go ahead and finish my presentation, and then Ryan can get up and, and do his. So again, as I mentioned before, this is a very important parcel in the city. It is located at the edge of our urban services area. We are, this parcel is also located in our overlay district, so a lot of those design standards that Ryan will speak to when he gets up here are going to be required to be met in this location. So regardless of the use, whatever that use is, it's going to be a very good looking use of it based on our overlay district. And we do, staff does find it consistent with the City of Newberry Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Regulations as proposed. Again, they want to change it from commercial, I'm sorry, from agriculture to commercial automotive. And we again find this in, in compliance and consistent with the Newberry Com Plan and the Land Development Regulations. So I'll leave this up, and then Anna can switch it over to Ryan's presentation, which is this rezoning.
Come on down.
Thank you very much. Ryan Thompson again with NV5, agent for the applicant. I would like to point out that Holly Family Holdings are with us today. They're, have a contract on the property and really are the applicant of this petition. So with me is Mr. Phil Holly, his daughter, and husband, and her husband, Pepe. And Mr. Holly, when he spoke at the Planning and Zoning Board last week, reminded me of a story that I'd long forgotten. When Mr. Mike New came over to serve as your city manager for the last 10 years, reached out to Mr. Holly based on his reputation and, and work experience with Mr. New in Alachua, and asked him, you know, what can we do about this corridor? State Road 26 from the city out to Jonesville. Long story short, that culminated into Mr. Holly serving as an agent for seven major stakeholders, property owners along that corridor. And we were fortunate to be able to look at the corridor from an economic development standpoint. That effort led to changes to your comprehensive plan to encourage economic development, including establishing the corporate park future land use, which is what implemented the agritech business park. The city looked at a location for the agritech business park, and eventually the overlay district that is your gateway into the city and how it functions all over the last 10 years. And so the city is making the right steps in the right direction to both see how the city grows and protect its heritage and, and culture. So this piece is at the gateway of that, but it can serve as a commercial piece with respect to the heritage and culture of the city. The city established the urban service area as the eastern boundary of where development is going to occur. Well, this is, this is where it stops, right? Beyond that corridor, or beyond that boundary, there's no development for three miles until you get to Jonesville. But within the urban service area, it's important for the city to maximize the opportunities that it has. With that said, I would like to just give a very brief presentation based on staff's very thorough presentation. The request is from agriculture, the commercial automotive, to promote a strong diverse local economy, deliver unique commercial services to the City of Newberry. We had the Planning and Zoning Board on August 18th. This demonstrates that we followed the city's process for rezoning applications. With your favorable motion will be for you again for second reading on September 8th. This is a context map of the subject property. You can see highlighted in orange with State Road 26 and 202nd Street there to the east, which is the same line as the urban service area and surrounding developments. This is the Newberry Projects map, actually from 2004, because they've advanced this map into an interactive map, which is very nice. The subject property is here on the eastern boundary. Number 14 is Crystal Lake. This commission just approved 50 acres of commercial on that. To the south, number 15 is Tanglewood. It has, I believe, 20 acres of commercial on that property. The scenario of the subject property, I'll scoot these a little bit faster since we're familiar with the property. There is a communications tower there on the 25 acres to the north. This is the Tanglewood Plan Development and access to the site. We'd probably be able to get two access points on State Road 26 according to FDOT guidelines, so I'll get to that in just a little bit. The existing flu, and I wanted to show Crystal Lake and Tanglewood because the, the data we had hadn't caught up yet, so I did animate those in there. But those are the commercial portions of those properties. And here's how we would fit in with the commercial future land use, and again with the commercial automotive zoning. So just real quick on the commercial automotive, because I know staff's already gone through that. So the commercial automotive is looking for high visibility and access to roads with high volumes of traffic in large land areas. There are very few sites within a city that would be able to accommodate that characteristic or those characteristics. And there's very few properties within a city that actually have C A zoning. I've highlighted the five here on, on this map, and those sites are either developed already or too small to really accommodate larger users. So this does provide a unique opportunity in that respect. The gateway overlay does apply to this, to all 25 acres of the property. It does, the overlay itself, as staff communicated, does have its own special exceptions and prohibited uses and specific use standards that would apply to this property. I'll get more into that. But primarily the site design, I think, and building design is where the gateway overlay comes in. It doesn't so much prohibit uses, it makes them fit in and makes them more attractive, right? So we would have a 100-foot landscape buffer along the roadway, enhanced landscaping requirements for both the stormwater ponds and the parking lot areas. Looking specifically at the uses, I created this table. So as staff mentioned, the C A builds on the CG permitted uses and the CI permitted uses, but the gateway overlay would impact those uses allowed in C A. So on the left, far left column, the uses that are permitted by right, heavy machinery and equipment sales, repaired service garage, car wash, and rental, et cetera. I won't read them all. Most of those uses have specific use standards within the overlay that would dictate how they look, screening where parking can be located, you know, garages, whether they can face the road or, or what have you. Then there's other uses that would require a special exception within the gateway overlay. So even though they're allowed in C A, because it's an overlay, a special exception would be required for those uses, and they're listed here. And then some uses that overlay just flat out prohibits. So I wanted to illustrate how the gateway impacts a site. Yeah, no better example than what we're discussing here, right? So this is the 25 acre site. I did highlight the median in State Road 26, and in those blue lines are the curbs, so you could see the travel lanes. This is the Tanglewood PD. I highlighted there the stormwater portion of that property. And then where stormwater would likely be... And then where stormwater would likely be located within our property, there's two kind of faint, there's one vertical and one horizontal dotted line there, the drainage divides for the site. So we looked at about 15% of the site for stormwater for this, and that's a decent ballpark. We usually, it's either 15 or 20%, depending on where we are in the county. FDOT would allow one directional access point. That's no left out. So you left in, right in, right out at 1,320 feet from 202nd Street. So that's what that's showing you. And then additional right in, right out, about 660 feet from 202nd. And we'd like to have access from 202nd Street as well. So about 300 feet to the north on 202nd, a fair distance from State Road 26, we'd like to have access. And then within the site, we would have cross access. So you don't have to get out to go to the neighboring use. And then also consider connectivity to the north. You know, there could be an opportunity for that to develop in the future, so we don't want to shut the door on that. But we got a hundred-foot wide landscape buffer, okay? So 80 trees, 80 shade trees would be planted in that buffer. And 58% will be hedges and landscape. So that would be significant screening for whatever uses go on that property. And then landscaping around the stormwater ponds. So if you look at what that means for the site, the buffer is about 17% of the site. It could be used for stormwater. So we did account for some overlap there. And stormwater is 15 to 20% of the site, but at least 30% of the site is just going to be dedicated to stormwater and buffers. That's good. It's what this DICE wants and, and that's what we're willing to bring. So with that said, the application request is consistent with multiple goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. Hit the right button here. We are in compliance with your land development regulations and staff finds the application as such and recommends approval. We humbly request the same. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right, we'll get to that in just a minute. If needed, is there any public comment? We're at that point at the moment. Seeing none, does staff or the applicant wish to cross-examine any part of the presentation or application? Seeing none. Now, if either of you have any questions, you're more than welcome to ask them of staff or the applicant through the chair. Commissioner Coleman?
Got a question.
Staff or applicant?
Just going to direct that towards the city manager on this. How many bikes at this will they have to get this process through? How many more, so when we look at this? Six, seven times, or is that a lot? I mean...
At least, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Well, it depends on how many different commercial item...
That's true. Depends on how many commercial applications they break forward.
Yes, so they...
They could be more.
That's correct.
Well, I would have my concerns here because I'm worried that it could be a used car lot. But I've known Mr. Holly back when I was banking, I was a banker and stuff. I don't see him not building something that is not going to be way above board. And he does what he says he'll do, so I'm pretty confident with this.
Car lot has to come back by special exception.
That's correct.
Yeah, I understand that.
That's a even, yet another bite at the apple. So you've got site plan, you've got future, there's lots of steps in this process.
Okay, then I don't have any problem. Well, the contractor just in itself, I mean...
Commissioner Ferensworth?
So what was the recommendation of the, of the zoning board?
The zoning board, after much consternation and discussion, they said that they wanted an approval, they were okay 4-0 if it was anything other than, they were recommending to the commission, anything other than commercial automotive.
Okay.
But then we also...
Actually, I, I think the motion from the P and Z was to move it, was to move it forward, but to ask the board to think more deeply about the zoning category. I don't think that they, they clearly did have some heartburn about the CA. But I think their heartburn about the CA was specifically about a car lot. And I think there was a phrase used, "used car lot." And I think we had a hard time getting over that phrase. And we said multiple times that if the applicant does move forward with a car lot, that has to come back by special exception. So my memory of the motion, I'm not sure exactly what got written down, it's been a long time since 5:00 this morning, but it was, "We want to move it forward, but we are asking the commission to think more deeply about the zoning category." You know, clearly they were opposed to a used car lot, but I think that there are some other things that would be in that category that this board has set. That's right next to the AgTech Park. If there was an AgPro dealership, if there was a Massey dealership, those kinds of things. Remember, in the overlay district, whatever goes there has to be aesthetically top-notch. And I agree with this developer in particular. We had the same level of, of discomfort with small-scale rural residential years ago. It wasn't be one acres, wasn't it going to be two acres? What is this going to look like? And at that point, we said, "Well, luckily, fortuitously, the developer, the applicant was someone we had a high level of trust in." And now when you go out and you look at Barrington, it's absolutely gorgeous. And to the point now where the commission is actively seeking other developments to emulate that.
It said he had it under contract? Who's under contract with?
I'm sorry?
He's got the land under contract if he gets the zoning. So if we don't get the zoning, then he has the opportunity to take off ramp.
Okay, what about something like a, I mean, commercial automotive? That just encompasses a lot to me and it kind of, it's kind of a scary thing, especially for an entranceway into the city. And I've known Mr. Holly for a long time too, and I'm confident in his ability to, to do the right thing. But on the other hand, things change and property gets sold and, and developed by somebody else and, and this goes on. But I'm just kind of concerned, what, what about like an automotive repair shop? Could that be put out there?
Out of the overlay district.
Out of the overlay district, okay. Because I thought it was what we had discussed at one time about that.
The overlay district provides the commission with another set of limitations, right? So there's, and, and most of those speak to aesthetics, but in CA, you can do everything in the CI and the CG. And I think from the applicant's standpoint, that's what they're looking for. They're looking for the broadest brush because they don't have anything right now. They want to go out and seek development. So they're looking for something that gives them the option to do all kinds of things. But again, this board, everything has to come back to this board in one way or another. Some of the things that are least palatable to this board have to come back by special exceptions. The other things still have to come back for site plan, site review, renderings, all of those things.
And is there any kind of, is there any water or sewer to that site yet?
There is water to the one edge, I believe, and then sewer would either come from the south or from the east, or the west.
North, south, east, west?
West.
Southwest corner.
West. South, I do, I do. I just didn't, it's, yes. So, so it comes from the south or it comes from the west.
Okay. I just, I'm just concerned about what's going to go in there, that's all, but...
Well, that's the reason that...
Overlay district.
Well, that's also the reason I asked, how many...
Yeah. I mean, what about Tesla dealership? Could they have...
Yes.
Only by special exception. There's two, there's, the prop, the property can't go from ag to automotive. It can't make that jump by itself. There's really kind of two restrictions here. One is the overlay, which you were part of that discussion. So that restricts what it looks like. But it is also, the prohibited uses and the special exceptions are also another restriction that this board has on this particular kind of property, which kind of creates those additional bites at the apple. So they're not going from ag to a car lot.
Unless...
That's not going to happen.
Well, I'm also, excuse me, I didn't want to cut in. The way I'm looking at, at this is, is that I just, I don't see this family, they're so invested over here anyway, I just don't see this family doing something that's, that not all of Newberry's going to benefit from anyway.
All right, any other further, further questions? Any final argument by any of the parties involved? Seeing... All right.
Yes, he hasn't. Oh, I'd be happy, it's, it's much colder in here than it is out in the vestibule. Yeah. Jerry Edenbach, CHF, NV5, sorry, Executive Vice President. It's taken years. So you said you used to pick watermelons and then hay and now banking and now here. So yes, as the manager stated, there is multiple opportunity, there are multiple opportunities for you to review this. And if you think that chronologically, because most of you, we know you well, you have been around the area forever, if you think of the North Main Street corridor, when years ago, those dealerships looked pretty pale and pretty stale. They were right smack dab on the road. We've had the privilege of the opportunity to do things like Volkswagen BMW, Toyota, Mercedes-Benz, Mazda across the street. And as those come back, each time, they get to look better and better and more attractive for the community. So your opportunity to ensure that that will happen on this is great. And as I always say, your chance is not to meet to the bar, it's to set the bar. And that's what you did when you actually had us here years ago, setting up the gateway overlay district. So I hope that you will continue in your pursuit of doing the best thing possible for the gateway district. And we will soon be coming forward to talk about some things with Destiny Church that they want to do because they're so proud to be a part of the gateway in the City of Newberry. That's it, thank you.
Jerry Edenbach? Mr. Attorney? I was going to give you a card. It's old fashioned. Mr. Attorney, could you please advise the decision-making body of the applicable law and factual findings?
Substantial competent evidence, Mr. Mayor.
Any further deliberations? Do I hear a motion? Commissioner Long, Commissioner Clark, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. All right, we're going to do the same thing. Number 13, flume, and this is on Pat Post property, followed by rezoning, and this is ag to ag essentially. But we are back to legislative at this point. And Mr. Attorney, could you read in 25-50 for us, please, sir?
The ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, amending ordinance number 4-91 is amended relating to a large-scale amendment of the Future Land Use Plan Map of the City of Newberry Comprehensive Plan, provided for a change of land use classification from Lautre County Rural Agriculture less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres to the City of Newberry Agriculture, less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres on certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida. Parcel number is 2515-004-003, consisting of approximately 111 contiguous acres, provided severability repealing all ordinances in conflict, provided an effective date. Appropriate motion is to pass. Ordinance number 2025-50, upon its reading by Title only.
Fantastic. Well, we're getting the presentation loaded up here. Mr. Perez, if you want to kind of start giving us the...
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Overview?
Yeah. So this particular property is a recently annexed property, annexed on August 11th, owned by Patrick M. Post. And if you could just click the presentation so I can progress the slides. Thank you so much. Doesn't seem to be... Awesome, there we go. Recently annexed on August 11th, so it's a new property in the City of Newberry. With that property comes the land use that it inherited with the prior jurisdiction was, which is Alachua County. So it currently has Alachua County future land use on it. We're changing it to an appropriate City of Newberry future land use, like for like here, so not a lot to really contemplate, going from Lautre County Rural Agriculture to City of Newberry Agriculture. This was served by the Planning and Zoning Board last Monday on August 18th, and they did recommend adoption of the ordinance. Our recommended motion is to approve the first reading of the ordinance and authorize the city manager to transmit this to the Florida Department of Commerce, because it's a large scale, it's over 50 acres. So we covered a lot of this. There is a companion rezoning application with this as well, doing a very similar action. Here's an aerial image of the property, just as you're headed out of Newberry and Alachua County. It'll be there on your left. Can't see it though, it's kind of screened by trees. On the south side of 26, right before you get to Southern Fuelwood.
The pit, they did...
Yeah, just east of the pit. And it's just in there. I think he's kind of lined it with some... Yes, sir, south side. All right, just showing you here the boundaries of the property owned by Patrick McKenzie Post. So he does own a lot of property out there that's currently in the city and has ag, land use and zoning. This is just completing that last, yeah, that last piece of the puzzle there. Current land use, proposed land use, seeing nothing changed. And level of service, there is currently sufficient capacity in our levels of service to serve the property. If any application comes forward for development of the property, it'll come back before this body, as serving as the Board of Adjustment if it's a site plan or if it's a special exception. And essentially completes my application, I won't go over all that. But we did find it consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations. And you have my recommend, recommended motion that completes my presentation and I am available for questions.
This is pleasure of the board. We have a motion from Commissioner Long and a second from Commissioner Maison. Y'all have any other discussions, deliberations, questions from staff?
Where does our water line go out there? How far does that go out?
It's 1,300 feet.
It does not go out that far.
I actually looked, I actually looked, I actually looked this up. It's 1,300 feet away from where that yellow line goes in to the east, down by the mini storage, almost to 337.
Little mini storage? It would be good if we could run at least a water line out there. I don't know how much that would cost or possibility of it happening, but I would think that...
It would be roughly a million dollars.
Well, I think we have that.
Whoa, you just had, whoa. We're going to test metering, man. You're really spending that money, man. It's public. Just to, just for the commission's memory, we did a similar thing east down Newberry Road, and the, the commission pre-fronted the money to run the water line down, and we created a pioneering agreement so that any development that came in paid the commission back. I think a similar situation is possible going to the west. And I would also remind the commission, I think most of you agree, any development that we get to the west of town, we capture almost all of those dollars. Any development that happens to the east of town, I think we split between Jonesville and Newberry, Gainesville, those kinds of things. So if we can get utilities down, I think we would spread Newberry's growth rate. So I'm not advocating for it, Commissioner Ferensworth, but I am saying that it's not a completely crazy idea to try to, to try to get some utilities down.
Mr. Coleman?
Have we got more line going?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that act, that actually, I think, has more legs to keep advancing. Part of that is Westone. So if the Westone gets back on track, I think that there's an opportunity to run utilities... an opportunity to run utilities west, straight down there, and also extend southwest 15th. Commissioner Coleman, I can't quite tell, are you right around where 15th, it's not on the screen, it's just to the east, about right in there?
15th is right.
Is that 15th? That's 15th? Okay. So that's where the utilities would extend down southwest 15th.
Okay.
I think both of those are possibilities. I would say we'd probably be a little hesitant to run utilities down Newberry Road until the two-way pairs are done, and then the state intends to four-lane from Newberry to Trenton, so we wouldn't want to have to move our utilities that we just put in, but we can have that conversation with the state.
Is there a plan for four lanes?
I don't want to speak for the state, but what I've heard is, as soon as they're done with the two-way pairs, which don't start till the end of '26, beginning of '27, that's their next project. Now, it took them 10 years to work on this one, so what does it mean, next project? It could be in a sneak ball going, or it could be 10 years later.
All right, if there's no other deliberations on the dials, I'll go to the public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. We will go back to quasi-judicial, same standard, same format applies, and this is the quasi-judicial first reading of ordinance 25-65. Mr. Attorney?
Ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for rezoning from Alachua County A to City of Newberry Agricultural A on certain lands, consisting of 111 acres, more particularly described in Exhibit A, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing an appropriate motion is passed ordinance 25-65, upon its reading by title.
And one slight timeout. Did we read into the record number 12's quasi-judicial? I feel like, I'm afraid that we just jumped right into presentations, does anybody remember?
I thought we read it.
We did? All right, so I'm the only one.
There was a little bit of chatter going on, so I...
Okay, all right, just double check. So we're on 14, okay, so we are, we're on 14, we've read into the record, go to presentations. Thank you, Jean-Paul, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Jean-Paul Perez, Community Development Department. The request before the Board tonight is the companion zoning item for the prior future land use map amendment. This was also heard by the Planning and Zoning Board last Monday, August 18th, and they do recommend adoption of ordinance 2025-65. Our recommended motion is to approve on first reading the ordinance, and that would rezon the property from Alachua County Agriculture A to City of Newberry Agricultural A. It is a like-for-like rezoning of the property, both are remarkably similar. The applicant is Patrick M. Post, and this is dependent on the future land use map being adopted, so we'll have to wait for that to come back from the state before we can have a second reading for this rezoning. And the property consists of approximately 111 acres, this is the aerial image of the property, and similar image is showing other properties contiguous to this one, owned by Patrick Post as well, as well as all the properties currently accessed from Newberry Road. Current zoning district, proposed zoning district, same colors, so all is gravy. Concurrent, we'll look at as development plans come in, if one does come in, I think Patrick just likes us and wants it to be, all his properties to be in the City of Newberry, and so we welcome more Patrick Post. Any development that's more intense than Agricultural A would require extension of municipal services to the property, so something more intense, like a housing development, which I think a lot of folks just have a natural fear for here, would require significant investment from the developer to get those utilities out there. Is it happening today? No. Is there a possibility for it in the future, potentially? Staff finds the request consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations. Again, PCB does recommend adoption of the ordinance, and we do recommend that you approve it on first reading tonight, it'll come back for a second reading later.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, any questions by the Board through the Chair of the Staff?
Motion.
The applicant's not here, we're not going to cross-examine ourselves.
Second.
We're at, we're, hold on, I don't, gotta be a little more formal about the quasi-judicial. We'll get to the motion after we have, you have the question of the Staff?
If he did develop, but he, I mean, currently, you would be able to put like, one dwelling per five acres, is that correct, or?
Yes, that's about 22 houses. No, that doesn't change. You could do that today, we would just have to apply Alachua County Code. Rezoning it to City of Newberry allows us to apply our code, and that would, 111 acres would not 22 units.
When it's under our code, it's the same as one dwelling per five?
Certainly, yes, sir.
Any other questions of Staff? Your presentation serves as your final argument, I assume?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Now we can do motion?
Motion.
And second, please advise the decision-making body, Mr. Attorney?
Competence is finished, evidence.
If there's no other further discussions, I will move to a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. All right, I think we've got a good handful of things still left to go, guys. Avalon Woods, Phase 5 Construction, Jean-Paul Perez?
Not for 15 more minutes.
Only 10:15.
Go ahead, make a motion now. 11.
10:30.
Please, nobody second that. 11 o'clock?
Or adjustment, or agreement?
That's a different meeting.
Different meeting.
That's a different meeting.
We have a motion to 11. We have a motion on the floor to extend to 11, we have a second on the floor to extend to 11. Any discussion, any discussion from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to extend passes to 11 o'clock. Number 15, Avalon Woods, construction plans, Jean-Paul, you have the floor.
Thank you. Do you want the ordinance or resolution read into the record, or are you?
Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Newberry, Florida, approving with appropriate conditions and safeguards, construction plans, Phase 5A of the Avalon Woods mixed-use development, as authorized in Section 5.17 of the City of Newberry Land Development. In a mixed development, MU zoning district on certain lands within corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, consisting of 15.5 acres and more particularly described in Exhibit A, repealing all resolutions. Motion is passed, Resolution 2025-6, SD 25, upon its reading by title only.
Thank you. Jean-Paul. Jean-Paul Perez, thank you. So, construction plans, Avalon Woods, Phase 5A, generally, we do these by consent, this one's a little bit different because of what's being proposed here, so I'm going to go through a brief presentation as to what the request is. There are some conditions that Staff has attached to the request, and we'll get your feedback on one of the key items that are being proposed here, that diverges a little bit from the preliminary development plan. So the recommended motion is to adopt resolution approving the construction plan with Staff's condition and authorize the city manager, they're designated to execute the Newberry Retail Utility Service Developers Agreement, that is the agreement that guarantees payment for wastewater's development fees. The applicant is Jay Brown, Professional Group Incorporated, the owner is M3 Avalon Land Two LLC. With this is infrastructure improvements that will support 91 single-family lots, and the zoning and land use are mixed use. This particular portion of the site is 15.5 acres, and here's an image showing how that's split up in the bottom portion or the southern portion of the development. And there's one last residential phase, Phase 5B, which is close to the entrance of Easton or Northwest 16th Avenue, which is not shown here, but this is the southernmost residential development. In red, I have identified the route from the residential development that will connect into the 41 Commerce Park. This is a connection that the developer desires, and this will provide an alternative exit for folks from the residential development. Other than 24th or 16th, they'll be able to make their way into Northwest 9th Place through 41 Commerce Park. Here's the adopted preliminary development plan, and as you can see here, while there's a suggestion of connection to the south, there is no identified external connection here on the adopted development plan, so this is a new external connection, not originally contemplated. And I did have a conversation with the developer, Dave McDaniel, this morning with M3 Development, and he expressed to me that it was always the intent of this development to connect, and it's very faint, but you can see all the way on the right-hand side of the screen, there's a little T-connection, so it looks like the 244th Drive would connect to what would be the commercial component, but I don't know if it was ever the complete intention for the residential to connect to an industrial park. Here is the overall plan for the residential Phase 5A. You can see it comes south and ends in a cul-de-sac, and just west, has a little cul-de-sac that turns off, and then makes a left into 41 Commerce Park, and that's that Northwest 244th Drive connection there. Already out there, you have shore builders and town center storage, and then there's some future commercial, which is a requirement of a mixed-use development, that they have to provide a certain level of commercial venture out there. And part of, this is a little bit closer image here, and just showing it zoomed out as they'd be probably exiting through Commerce 41, so you can see some of the uses that they'd be working with in 41 Commerce Park. And we did find the request consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations as it relates to the construction plans themselves. We are recommending adoption with conditions, and I'm just going to go over those conditions real quick. We are recommending that they amend the development order to allow for connection to Northwest 244th Drive, so we'll open it up as an amendment, just to memorialize that that connection is required, or is provided, not to get bureaucratic, but it's just required by the code. This is considered a major change, and the code requires that major changes come back to this Board, so it's not something that we can do administratively, so we do need your blessing on that. And I think that's something that we need to contemplate as we're looking at these construction plans, whether that would be acceptable, so I think the question is now and not later, whether that amendment is appropriate. Resolve all outstanding utility access and easement issues. As Jamie Jones has explained it to me, it's just truing up some things that need to be finalized, which is the natural course of progression in development. We do need to hold harmless agreement for any of the properties that have backwater valves, some of the topography may require some of the housing units to have a backwater valve, and the maintenance on those, we just need to make sure that we're protected, the city is protected. Acknowledgement of terms for forced main upsizing costs, so we're just being very explicit about what specific upsizing costs the city will cover for the upgrade of a forced main from six inches to eight inches, which is materials only. That completes my presentation, I'm available for any questions, and the developer and engineer record are also here for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean-Paul, this is legislative, it's not quasi-judicial. It was a pleasure of the Board?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, of Staff or applicant?
Staff.
Staff.
Couple of things.
You want something back up on the board?
No, if I remember correctly, they were supposed to develop part of the commercial before they continued with the development of the residential, and I was kind of wondering what happened to that.
So, I can't speak to Avalon Woods specifically, in reviewing the development order, it allows even for flexibility with the unit types that they've selected. There are certain thresholds for commercial and office that are laid out in the development order. I recall for Tanglewood, we put a timer on the commercial that they were providing for that particular development, and that timer was prior to the final phase, which I believe is four phases, they needed to provide the commercial or amend the development order. I don't believe that Avalon Woods, unless somebody has a different recollection, there's no timing on the commercial, it's just prior to expiration.
There wasn't a timing put on Avalon Woods, there was a phasing put on Avalon Woods, but the vocabulary that made it into the developer's agreement says that there has to be a percentage of commercial available land set aside by, right? And then with the commercial development that happened at the southern end, so they've got shore builders, and they've got the storage unit there, so between the commercial development at 27, at the entranceway, the commercial land set aside, and then the two businesses that did tap in, but right now, those businesses are not tapped in to Avalon Woods utilities, they're getting utilities from the industrial park over into it. But the short answer to your question is, sort of. There is phases, it very clearly says you get percentage of this, but the wording much more implies that you've got land set aside that is commercially, commercial, developable, right?
Developable?
Yeah, developable, and that, that standard has been met.
Okay, so they didn't really develop that property to the south, did they?
I think that's, I think that's, if you can go back to the amended motion, or the amendments to the motion, suggested motion, I'd say that is what we need to rectify, we need to figure out, make sure that the utilities is looped, we need to make sure that everyone over there is getting utilities, not through other people's property, those kinds, so those are the, resolve the outstanding utility access and easement issues.
And the change in the, the road as far as going south also?
I want to make, Staff is not taking a position on that, Staff's position is that we went back and we looked really hard, and we can't find anywhere in writing where that was ever approved by the Board. And your city manager does not have the authority to approve a change like that, having residents go out through an industrial park, our people coming into the neighborhood through an industrial park, I don't have that level of authority. So if, if this motion passes, what it's asking is, Board, you need to give us, and you need to give the applicant direction on those points. I think we definitely need to get the utilities, everything that's two, three, and four, we absolutely need to get in there on Amendment One, we just need you guys to tell us, give us direction. Is that something, is that what you originally conceived, are you comfortable with that? Are you not comfortable with that? We just need that feedback. I just lack the authority to make that decision, you guys have to make that decision.
My feedback is, I don't like the road going through the industrial park into the subdivision, and I don't like them developing another phase without putting commercial property in, so that's where I stand.
Any other comments from the, from the Board?
I'm gonna say on the, can you go back to the, the road is, seems to be ambiguous here? I don't remember that ever, is that a change coming in there?
This is the newly proposed, this is the newly proposed, so if you go back to the one that had the red line, this is what you guys approved. There are some advantages to having the road there, but it is an industrial park, and you're mixing industrial and residential.
Well, that's when, and probably fire safety and different things like that, it'd be a good way to get in and out to that back, because it's a long way through there. But, you agree, Chief?
Yes, sir.
But I don't like mixing this, and all that traffic into this industrial area, because we got a cement plant coming onboard, we got some things coming in there that'll be, you know, big vehicle, big traffic. be, you know, big vehicle, big traffic. And I think we're mixing apples and oranges here with the road.
There's also, right at the edge of the entrance, if it becomes an entrance, there's two driveways, one for shore builders and one for Watson, that are parallel to each other. So you, and then there's a stormwater basin on the other side. So we need to resolve that issue. If the commission wants to allow that to become an access point, we have to go back to shore builders and Watson, and we have to ask, can we merge that together? Otherwise, you're going to have two exits kind of side by side. So it's going to be a three-way stop, but with two roads coming out this way and two roads coming this way.
I don't know that the industrial area wants the traffic volume out of a subdivision when they're coming in and out doing work. I just don't know that this is a good mix. But we're not going back to 2741, correct? At all? With either of these roads?
Well...
Connection-wise, on the commercial side, or?
I think it's one of the things that we, and again, this was in my head. I want to say that right now.
Right.
It was in my head. But that 20, roughly 20-acre commercial lot, in my head, there was going to be an access point off of 27 into the commercial part, right there. And that's how people were going to get in and out. Now, that was never on a plan. It just sort of seemed naturally like that's how that would evolve. Now, I think there is an argument that the residents want to have the access to the storage units, and the people who own the storage units would love the residents to be able to access the storage units and get there, right? Somehow, some way, whether that's full access, partial access, I think that's, you know, those are yet to be determined questions. But I think the utilities have come south of where the houses are, but the existing commercial buildings are mostly on temporary utility connections further south. And those property owners have already invested to get the utilities from the industrial park there. I think the electric is for sure, has to be temporary.
Electric.
Electric has to be worked on. But we also, we're very much concerned that that utility water sewer creates a loop system throughout there as well. And what we don't want to get into is having to negotiate with multiple people who buy this commercial land and now ask the city for financial compensation to give us the easements to run utilities, those kinds of things. All that is part of selling developed commercial land. That's what we want to rectify.
We don't have access to 2741, to this property? DOT has to approve it? For that commercial site?
For that 20 acres, no.
Correct. Yeah, it would just, currently is through Commerce. You can see it here.
I don't remember this always being the plan to come out of there.
That's why, that's why we're back here, is this is a significant change, right? That's being requested, that you guys have to weigh in on.
Third time we kind of changed things.
The applicant is here. If you have any technical questions, or maybe want to find out the inspiration for this change, they can maybe address that.
Well, I mean, yeah, I see them there. Just, this is not part of the, I just don't think the commercial aspect and the residential like this mixes well. I mean, we got these big trucks. This is, this is industrial for a reason. And I'm just wondering if there should be a separation here. Have we heard from the commercial at all? Have we had a, anybody reached out to the commercial folks and seen what their thoughts are on this before we start voting on something?
We're not in quasi-judicial, right? This is, okay. So I have been reached out to by some of the property owners back there who've expressed their concerns, especially with the exits there. People coming from the north, south on 27 are at a fairly high speed at that point. The larger trucks already have kind of a hard time getting out, and they're concerned about having residents behind the larger trucks that have a hard time getting up to speed and all those. I think all of those things are surmountable, right? They're surmountable with technology, with lights, deeper turn lanes, those kinds of things. But all of those things also share a cost to implement. So I think that is the, that is the crux of the conversation that we're having now. So a lot, especially the batch plants in there have said, hey, you know, with the amount of construction and concrete coming in and out, they're at, how many trucks on average a day? Seven to 10? Or at least seven to 10 trucks per day. They have, their time periods kind of overlap with the, at least the morning rush hour, residents trying to get in and out. I do believe that residents would use it. I think, especially if I live in the back, I think I would...
Oh, yeah. That's what I'm, I think just wondering what we're doing with the industrial side. So, go ahead.
Mr. Maison?
Yeah, man. I'm not a fan of the phase in general. I drive that lot, that commercial park, and there are a lot of huge cement trucks, Watson trucks, electric trucks, that I could see this potentially being a problem. I did, I did speak to a couple of the commercial business owners in that park, and it's already, I mean, it hasn't happened yet, and I don't have wood here to knock on, but they were a little nervous about Newbury Corners being directly across from the commercial park with all the trucks coming out and taking less than rice. So I can't see this not being a problem or potentially causing an accident. So I'm not, I'm not a fan of the phase being there. I think it's too close to the commercial park. And this is one of those things where, yes, when those guys move there, they're going to be like, well, you moved to a commercial park, I already see it, foresee it right now. They're going to start complaining about the noise and everything. And then plus, there is a cement plant that's going to be coming right next, right on those cul-de-sacs? I mean, I'm not a fan of this phase. I'm just not a fan of it. Love the neighborhood, not that phase, though.
So...
Definitely don't want to go on 244.
We have a recommended motion. If the dais does not even offer a motion, issue dies. We could also pass a motion with these conditions recommended by the staff, but... Trace?
He wants to...
Yeah, understand.
He's, he's part of the presenter, so he can, he can come up and answer questions.
Can we go back to the slide that showed the previous, previous approved layout? Okay. So I know it's pretty zoomed out, but what is shown on this plan is there is no location shown for another access to 2741 through that commercial. Would everybody like that in a perfect world shore? But that was never something that was anticipated being a guarantee through there. The road from 41 Commerce Park is stubbed to our property and to the area that we made commercial. And whether we showed it with a line connecting or not, there is a road stubbed to the west that connects to the commercial land that has a road stubbed to the north from 41 Commerce Park. And the intent was always to connect there. The reason for not necessarily showing a looped connection there is we weren't sure what was going to come in that commercial land. Was the road going to come south and 41 Commerce Park come south and they meet up somewhere else? Possibly. But we didn't want to box ourselves into a road along the northern piece of that commercial land that created that loop from the get-go. So I think from looking at this, it is clear that we always intended to connect the residential to the commercial and the commercial to the industrial. You know, it is a future phase, it's something where we didn't want to box ourselves in, but that is definitely something that was always a consideration. We're just to the point now where we're ready to make an actual connection and do the engineering design behind that, and that's what we've done with the construction plans for 5A.
If it was always the plan, why'd you draw it like this?
It was always the plan to connect residential to the commercial and the commercial to the industrial. We aren't, we weren't sure at this time exactly what that route would be. It's possible that they could have been parallel roads that came down and connected around a parcel down further to the south. So we didn't want, at that time, to show a road along that northern piece of the commercial property to kind of box that out and, you know, take possibilities off the table there.
I know I never remember that being part of the discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted the record show. I did say, what was in my head? And I acknowledge that there was never the road through, but the whole point was to go from industrial to like a light industrial before you get to the residential.
Yes.
And so connecting the residential correctly to the industrial, it's just a simple, it's a different question. It's a different question that I don't have the authority to answer that question. If there was a road going down through the middle of the new commercial, that could also loop into the residential, then those residents could get into the storage unit and those kinds of things without having to go and mix into the industrial. And maybe that's why, in my head, that was just what was going to end up happening, because that's generally what ended up happening. But it was in my head that that was going to be the, it wasn't, but it was also, the road there was also never there either.
Do y'all feel, maybe I'm jumping the gun, do y'all feel like you even want to talk about this anymore and find out, get more direct conversation with the staff? I feel like I need it, but it's your call.
Y'all want to table it?
We don't even have a motion to table to begin with.
I do have a question. The original site plan, did that include that commercial piece of property? Because we, it came back for us to rezonate at one time.
I do remember the conversation he's sort of alluding to, that we've got this industrial commercial. In order to put residential in there, we needed sort of a step-down. And I'm pretty sure that's why there was no connection in the discussion. I'm pretty sure that's why it was drawn this way, so that we could have that phased out. But I, I don't want to be pressured, given the time, because I'd like to see, I'd like to go back, you know, for the citizens' behalf to see exactly what we were talking about before. Because to me, there's a little too much gray and unknown that I feel comfortable on your behalf as well as citizens' behalf.
I just remember that property coming back before us to be rezoned, so I was kind of wondering what the original intent was.
It was identified as it was going to be commercial. And then when they had a commercial on the line, they rezoned that to commercial. That's the steps in my head. But it was always identified that that was going to be a light industrial, office-based storage unit to create that step-down effect.
Do we want to make a motion then, or we just want to move on? We don't have anything to table, per se, but...
Before, before there's a motion, before the board, the developer would like to have an opportunity to speak, and I just want to provide clarification on the discussion regarding rezoning. The entire development is one zoning district that allows for both residential and non-residential. And that area is the part of the property, including Easton and some parcels close to 16th Avenue, that were the non-residential portions of the overall mixed-use development. I'm going to turn it over to Dave McDaniel's now.
Hello, I'm Dave McDaniel, mayor, commissioners. This isn't the first time y'all have seen this deal, but I want to, I want to help you understand how we are where we are. The southern parcel, the 20 acres, we set aside as commercial use because the MU zoning that we were working with, when we arrived to acquire the property, was an existing land use that we tried to work within to do our development. We thought it was an appropriate buffer between the industrial and the residential to put the commercial land in between. As you all know, we're not commercial developers, we're residential lot developers. I would have never wanted to put housing right up against the industrial, so it was a perfect solution. We ended up fulfilling the requirement of the MU by providing the 22 acres of non-residential uses, which is the minimum. We're going to end up probably having more than that on the non-residential uses in the development. With regard to access to the industrial park, we always had a little bit of question about whether we wanted to have direct access for the residential to the industrial. As we worked on it, and if you can flip forward to the plan that shows the current suggested layout...
See if you can get the clicker to work, it's right in front of your hand.
Ah, thank you. Shoot, what button am I pressing?
Mostly just arrow forward, arrow back.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so if you can see where Northwest 244th is...
If you go one more slide, it's blown up.
Is there one closer one than that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there we go. So Road W is really a better example. What we intended to do here is we ran a road all the way as far east as we could go, so that it was going to be an unattractive route, either in or out of the residential. So there's, there are going to be roughly 50 lots, I'm kind of guessing what the number is there, that will have probably better access going south than it will north. But from that point on, everything else and the rest of the phases will be a much more attractive way out of the development to go north than it would to go south. I also know, and I believe this to be true, and we have a transportation engineer to answer some of these questions, I feel confident that people, as a general rule, probably won't use that route. Now, I'm not to say, I feel they need to have that access for fire issues, or I know that the mini-storage folks would love to be able to have someone jump in their golf cart and run their stuff over the, without having to go on the main road. So that was really what we were thinking about in that front. But with regard to, I don't know whether you can table this or hold it off or whatever, I need to get started on this phase. I'm going to end up leaving the builder without lots if we don't get lots approved. So if there's some way we can find some sort of intermediate solution, so I can get started on this phase, and then we'll figure out what to do with the road. Truthfully, we don't have to have the road for transportation. At the same time, I don't, I don't think that it's going to be a terrible solution. It may not be the ideal, but it's not a bad, a terrible solution. And so I just ask that we consider proceeding with it. Let's get this thing going, and then, also, let me, let me go back one. Okay, so, can't really point, but if you see the future commercial, the square piece that fronts on the highway, there, we worked on various ideas on how to get access in and out of there, and then someone came along and bought it from us. And so eventually, there will likely be a road that runs through that future commercial all the way through the long narrow piece that will get up, back up into the development. So there will eventually be some cross-access development. But at this stage in the game, this is a good solution for us to be able to provide an alternative for people to come in and out, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask Assistant City Mayor Jamie Jones to provide some comments, and then I think I have a suggestion about how to hit Mr. McDaniel's ask and our ask, but...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Let me see if I can get this to go back. Get back to John Paul's conditions. So just for clarity's sake, wanted to, and it doesn't really state it here, but resolving all the outstanding utility access and easement issues, that's something we discussed with the developer that would have to occur for approval of 5B, construction plan approval. That was our intent, that those issues, he would be able to move forward with this Phase 5A, if the commission determined that that connection to the industrial park was appropriate. For John Paul's discussion, that was something we didn't have the authority to approve. That's up to you. But I wanted to clarify that piece, that all the outstanding utility access and easement issues would be prior to 5B, the next set of construction plans that would come before this body.
Which one's A, which one's B?
5A is what you're considering tonight. You haven't seen 5B yet. It's submitted to us. That's the phase around by the front of Easton that abuts those commercial lots by 16th. And there has been a lot of discussion over the past several years about whether or not a road should come through that commercial portion to 2741. There was even some discussion at one point in time evidently about connecting through the... There was even some discussion at one point in time evidently about connecting through the top shelf, uh, cabinet place. And we're just trying to resolve those issues and, and get clarity this evening.
Mr. Mayor, if the, I've heard two commissioners say they're not comfortable with the road connection. Uh, if another commissioner says it gives us clarity on that point, then we can simply amend the motion to either take that part out, right? Or we can change it amend development order to allow for a discussion about a connection to Northwest 40, uh, 244th. And we can bring back the fruits of that discussion later. So I think either one, I, I hear what the applicant is saying, uh, they, they need to keep going on 5A. But I, I think we need, we need feedback on this point. Or we need you guys to say, we're still willing to think about it. But before you get back for 5B, see what best minds can come up with to, or, or just say, we don't want the connection to the industrial park, that kind of.
So it's a potential of, of offering a motion with the conditions of 2, 3, and 4 and not 1?
Correct, but now that I'm thinking about it, both commissioners that spoke, one commissioner doesn't like 5A, and one commissioner doesn't want to move forward with any more residential until commercial. I'd say that's, that is not actually in the developer's agreement. What's in the developer's agreement is we land, we put this land aside, land is set aside for commercial. So I think in the developer's agreement, the way it got written up, they have met that requirement.
Mr. Coleman?
Well, here's the deal, guys. I mean, you're looking at the aerial of that. I think it's probably going to sit there, the commercial be a while. It's just not close to that, where that area is at. I'd even come in and say, hey, I mean, because it's just all houses now. Uh, it's, you got 20 acres there. I'd almost say, just build it on out and get it over with. That's just my opinion, because there's not, I just don't see with this developer that's not pushing, um, commercial anyway, and it's been a lot of phases. That's just a suggestion.
Why, why don't you say? 5B, where's 5B going to be?
5, 5B would be right to the right-hand side of the entrance road coming in the front of Easton. And what I wanted to offer, Mr. Yes, uh, what I wanted to offer, Mr. Mayor, is just historically, if you go over and look at the Newberry Corner, uh, development, which happened to be the same developer, the industrial park there, uh, where Coleman Construction and, and AAA Portland all was designed with a connection. He did his third phase, uh, he actually made the connection. And then we determined due to the fact that we had truck traffic coming out, it was a reverse problem. Truck traffic coming out through the residential, we ended up blocking it off. And to the city manager's point, you could move the construction plans forward, leave the road stubbed for now to the commercial piece, and at least he moves forward with his lots. You have more time to think about it, consider if you want it or not before you approve 5B. Tie that road connection, yes or no, to the 5B approval?
I'm good with that.
Can there, can there be a, a gate there that only fire can actually go in?
I'm sorry. Chief actually offered that as a, as a solution a while back, that we could leave, uh, fire access there with a gate that fire could get through more quickly to get to those houses.
John Paul? I have to ask the board, uh, to perhaps add a condition or, um, support staff in asking for an updated traffic impact analysis. Um, should we not allow access here? Their current traffic impact analysis, which I included with the agenda item, provided that 50% of the trips from phases four through, uh, six would be exiting, um, on 244th. Um, so it's utilizing that roadway as a, uh, method of disposing some trips.
How was that if we'd never had that road there till tonight?
It has, uh, been part of the traffic impact analysis up until this point.
Uh, that don't make sense.
I would, yeah. I'm, I'm inheriting the project as one of the, sure, yeah.
Mr. Jones?
I think what John Paul is speaking to is the original traffic impact analysis identified, uh, proportion of the trips would potentially be routed through there. Uh, there has been an update to that that identifies that without this connection, they could exit out on Northwest 16th. That being said, that would only accommodate that current phase and traffic would have to be analyzed again for 5B of those commercial pieces on the front.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that was one of my comments. If, if the board liked Commissioner Coleman's suggestion, I think if you flip that from commercial to residential, we're really close to needing a light at 16th and 27, where you come out of Easton. I think there is an argument to be made that some of that traffic is caused by Easton Sports Complex, right? I think if you, if you go to houses all the way, I think you definitely re-enter that, that conversation again, you know?
Good evening, Brian Snyder with Optimus Traffic Solutions. I prepared an update to the Avalon Woods, um, traffic study, previous two were done by NPH. And what we, what I looked at is two scenarios, one with a connection to 244th Drive. Um, that was actually the second alternative, and one was a no build where they have just that original two connections on Highway 41. And from the results of the study, it showed that both alternatives work. Um, of course, when you get a connection to 244th, you kind of balance out the traffic volumes of both of the intersections. So providing that connectivity is a good thing in many ways. Also, we talked about land uses to land uses for, for drivers wanting to get to the storage site or another site like that. So there are definitely advantages, less fire rescue. But both alternatives work acceptably. And I, I looked at full build out of the site with the entire residential build out.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Mayor, I think that, uh, what, what Jamie is saying, what John Paul is saying is if you change the recommended motion to further the conversation, then we can, we can look at those other. Cause I think all the things that the applicant is asking to achieve could also be achieved with the road that goes through the 22 acre commercial and connects in and it gives people a way to go out through that one without putting them into the industrial. I'm not a traffic engineer. I just know, I hear the commission saying that you're uncomfortable with spilling residential into the industrial. So that would give us the opportunity to have those kinds of conversations. Now, the issue here is that this applicant doesn't control all that land anymore. So now we have to, we have to put more seats at the table to say, we got, we have to get through the middle of this property in order to connect to create that loop a, around, right? So that's why we have to resolve some of these other issues so that no one can say whether the road's going to go now because now there's too many people at the table and we don't have a unified plan for that that attaches it to Avalon Woods, and that's what we got to resolve.
As we're at 11 o'clock.
Why don't you do expand, expand the, uh, meeting to 12? Dude, we're at 11 o'clock, man.
The girls, the, the girls can't stay. The girls can't stay.
Ten, or, uh, 11:30. Motion to move, to expand, expand the, uh, extend the, uh, meeting to 11:30.
You got somebody else that can bring, leave that up there, so they can leave?
Your dad's right, he's.
Uh, okay. We have a motion, did we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, any discussion on the motion to extend till 11:30? Seeing none, any from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Are we still talking here?
Uh, yeah.
Let's get it done.
Yeah. We've got this item, we've got the solid waste, which should pretty, pretty much have passed through. Then we have the youth council, uh, appointments, we have comments, and then we have a board of adjustment meeting after that.
All right, let's roll.
Let's roll, let me bring up my comment here.
Go ahead. Mr. Coleman?
All right, so here's the deal. You drive down that road there and all you see is nothing but houses, piles of houses. That's all there is there. And the way it's going right now, even having the new subdivision that's going to be eventually being out there with, uh, North Fleet, you know, I, me personally, uh, I don't see commercial going in there for a while. With all the commercial that we have on Newberry Road, and he's not a conver, commercial developer. I just think, I mean, what, what have we got, 20 acres sitting there? If it's easier on him, uh, and it's not a win-lose thing, but you know, I don't understand why we just don't let him go ahead and finish it out with his houses, which he's.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I'm just suggesting.
I'm, I have to add one more wrinkle, because the property that's been sold has been sold as commercial. I don't think that we have the right to take that designation away from the property owners.
Oh, I, I didn't know it sold it. Oh, okay.
That's.
You could have stopped.
It didn't occur to me that, well, I was with you there for a second, and then I thought, well, no, already part, part of that land has been sold as commercial.
Okay.
So you, not saying you couldn't do that, but you'd have to.
Do something on the phase, what's the motion, Mr. Mayor? Do something on the phase, let him continue, cap the road till we get a better feel from the, uh, industrial park and, and the people around that area and let him move forward.
If you would like, what I think I hear you saying is motion to approve with conditions of 2, 3, and 4, but not connect to 230, 244. But that not connect doesn't contemplate a stub out to be determined later or something like that, so.
Accept the recommended motion, 2, 3, and 4. Change item 1, 2.
2.
We take, take the road out, we leave the stub.
Stop at the end of the houses.
Right. Future conversation.
Dave McDaniel, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, the agreement with staff was, and what Jamie just, uh, pointed out, is number 2 is will be resolved during the Phase 5B application. Uh, 3, we will get resolved, but, uh, and likewise, uh, the, you know, the terms of the upsizing, we're doing that for sure. But so basically, the, the big deal is number 2. Uh, and I think if you guys want to just cut off the road at the commercial land, and then we'll figure out what the solution is later, I'm okay with that, as long as I can get started building my next phase.
Develop in order to allow no connection to Northwest 244th Drive at this point in time. Move the construction plan approval of 5A forward with the acknowledgement of conditions, resolve all outstanding utility access and easement issues prior to 5B construction plan approval, and the applicant accepts condition 3 and 4.
That's basically what you're saying, correct?
And I know the chief's here. Talking about this road, we're talking about this traffic getting into the industrial park right now. Road still going to be there?
No.
The chief can get in there with fire, or is it capped off?
Well, we can put a gate later, we can come back to that question later with a gate.
There's no.
Jamie, you know where.
There's no road at this point contemplated in your motion. Basically, it stops at the last lot. For us to be able to address it later, so that's the motion on the floor. We all understand? The motion at least, whether we agree is a different thing, but we understand the motion.
Yes.
I hear a motion from Commissioner Clark, a second from Commissioner Long on those contemplated items related to this motion. Any further discussion on the dais, any from the public? All those in favor, uh, I'll just roll call. Commissioner Coleman? Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Farnsworth? Commissioner Long? Commissioner Maison? Motion passes 3 to 2, so the item regarding the road will be determined between the two, between staff and kind of vet that out a little bit further. Motion passes. Uh, MSBU for solid waste ordinance 25-67, legislative hearing, second reading, Mr. Attorney.
This is ordinance amending ordinance 202418, providing consent for the entire corporate limits in the city of Newberry, Florida, to be included in a non-advalorm assessment for municipal service benefit unit created by Elatra County for the provision of solid waste management costs, providing for conditions for the consent, providing for the consent that is contingent on the annual rate increase, providing for an immediate effective date. Appropriate motion is passed ordinance 5-67, upon its reading by Title Only.
This is the second reading of the annual. The only wrinkle here was whether or not we continue to allow staff to handle it until it.
Until it increases past a reasonable amount. And I would say, Mr. Mayor, nothing has changed from first reading to second, first reading passed unanimously. I'd ask the record to show the presentation that was given at first reading and then ask for a motion to approve.
Motion.
I, I lost.
So who wanted to pass a motion, hold up one thing? Commissioner Farnsworth on the, on the motion, Commissioner Coleman on the second.
No, Clark's on the second.
Clark on the second, excuse me. If there's no further discussion on the dais, any from the public? On the motion on the floor? All those in favor, please signify by saying.
Newberry.
Newberry. Motion passes unanimous. Uh, Mayor's Youth Council Appointment Boards, uh, it's got you on here on this one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to pitch it for the, the lead presenter here, who according to youth work laws had to go home. Uh, there are two, uh, students that they have been able to identify who fit the requirements of the ordinance. Uh, one is Anna McGee, she's this, uh, she has spearheaded this. The second is Elena Wilson, who has actually convinced her parents to annex into the city of Newberry so that she meets the criteria. Uh, and what they are asking to do is go ahead and approve those two, appoint those two members to the Mayor's Youth Council now. When they get a third, remember that according to this ordinance, we have to have so many seniors and so many juniors so that you have the rotation. Uh, and so they're, they have struggled finding students, because remember, only about 40% of the kids that go to Newberry High School actually live in the city of Newberry. 60% are bused into our community from outside, so they're, they're having a hard time meeting that, but they have recruited people to annex in. So they will bring back the other appointments to you, or this board could say, uh, bring back the third. Once you have a quorum, you have the authority to appoint the other two.
What is the, uh, what's the pleasure of the board? Commissioner Long on the, Commissioner Long, Commissioner Coleman? Any other discussion from the board? Uh, any discussion from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. The motion passes unanimous. All right, now we are on citizens' comments. You have five minutes and.
I'm going to take 90 seconds.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
You got there first.
Uh, good evening, my name is Jared Dedenbach. As you know, I would like to thank you for your attention tonight and support. On October 1st, the American Planning Association San Velasco Chapter, which covers the north central Florida region here, will be holding planning official training. That is open to all commissioners, members of your planning and zoning board, as well as staff and members of the public. We will be doing that here in the lovely city of Newberry with the support of your staff. So in this 90 seconds that I'm expending right now, I'd like to make sure that you hold a placeholder for October 1st. We were going to have it next door at the Mentally North Fleet Municipal Building, but Stacy has told us that it's very loud with the construction there, so we may move it over to the IFIS buildings right around the curve by Canterbury. But an official notice will go out. I just want to, as the Chair of the San Velasco Section here in north central Florida, make sure that you hold a little placeholder. If you'd like to come learn more about planning or this quasi judicial process or legislative process, that, that notice will be out there and we would welcome your presence. It'll be an all-day session, so it'll start probably at around 8:30 in the morning with a breakfast. We'll have a lunch, we'll have numerous speakers. Dr. Laura Dedenbach and Ms. Patrice Voice will cover planning law that day, as well as other APA members from around the state that are coming to teach you all and your planning and zoning board members and that of all the other communities around.
That Dedenbach lady doesn't have very good judgment.
She is now the interim Chair of the Urban Regional Planning Department at the University of Florida, so she's working her way up that, that top notch there.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is Dwayne Davis. I live at twenty-five, four-three-nine Southwest Fifteenth Avenue, and I'm here to discuss ongoing construction on Fifteenth Avenue. Currently, as you are aware, a quarter mile of Fifteenth Avenue was redone from two lanes to three lanes. This project, according to the grant application, was to relieve the traffic congestion during certain times of the day due to school beginning and ending. By adding a left turn lane that was striped with left turn arrows and now has been painted over, plus adding new sidewalks, new storm drains with retention pond, and additional parking for Newberry Elementary School. As a resident of Newberry for over ten years, I have observed and accepted that mornings between seven fifteen AM and seven forty-five AM and one twenty-five PM to two-ten PM, there will be a traffic backup and we adjust our lives accordingly. I have watched the traffic patterns since the beginning of this school year. It is still a two-lane road, so either you have a two-lane road with a quarter mile left turn lane, or a two-lane road with a quarter mile right turn lane with choke points at both ends. I questioned whether induced demand was even a talking point during discussions. I add this with jest that you have really recreated a road to nowhere and a possible Saturday night drag strip in a residential neighborhood. I agree that if additional parking was needed for the school, it was a good idea, although serious thoughts should be given to how the sixty-some parking spaces near the retention pond can be safely used, if used at all, during the drop-off and pickup of students. Now to the meat of my concern. At no time was anyone on Fifteenth Avenue notified about this project, not in writing, phone call, by flyer, or by person. The first we knew about the project was a road sign near the railroad tracks. I believe the city missed out on valuable discussion, and it was a disservice to the residents and voting public. In my discussion with the construction crew, because of the road construction and additional parking, the stormwater system and retention pond was required to make project to code. Again, in my ten years of living on Fifteenth Avenue, I have experienced some powerful rain, and the only time there was a puddling of water was in the small ditch just off the road that was put there for that purpose, and fifteen minutes after the rain ceased, it was gone. Let's consider the environmental issues that this new storm system is going to have. Not some, but all of the microplastics, oil, antifreeze, and trash will be collected in the retention pond. Not the entire pond, but in three subgrade holes. By having this type of system and the karst topography of this area, you have created sinkholes in waiting and a collection dump with the subgrade holes. In conclusion, you spent two and a half million dollars on a road that was not needed, tore down a grove of trees, put an eyesore retention pond built for future sinkholes, will reduce property values, make homeowner parking limited, and move crosswalks directly in front of my neighbor's house. For a few thousand dollars, some well-placed signs saying, "School traffic only on Fifteenth Avenue, seven fifteen AM to seven forty-five AM and one twenty PM to two PM." The residents understand the twenty-foot easement and the rights of the city to use it, but it is your plans to make this road into a thoroughfare. I urge you to reconsider.
And thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, any other public comment? Y'all, okay.
Jason McGee, citizen, uh, just wanna commend you guys for doing the right thing when it comes to that, that fire assessment. Let's just not get in this situation again. I hope we all learned a valuable lesson when it comes to that. Um, one thing I wanted to talk about, um, is, you know, looking for ways to reduce costs for, for our citizens. And one of the things that I haven't seen or heard a lot about is, you know, guys, we've, we have a Lamborghini sitting in the garage. We have AMI. There are not, there are hardly any other municipalities around here that have that kind of tool. And one of the reasons when we started talking about AMI, one of the reasons that I was so passionate about it is the fact that when we went up and saw the demo up in South Carolina, they offered off-peak reduced rates for their customers. And, you know, we've had it for, what, maybe six, seven years now? Maybe five? Um, four? Since it's fully implemented? Okay. Well, you know, four years and we, I haven't heard anything about that. Um, I just think that we've, we've got this, we got this Lamborghini of a system and we're driving it around like it's a golf cart. So, uh, you know, I just, I hope that we'll look into, and, uh, you know, try to utilize some of the tools that come with that, with that AMI and try to help reduce some costs for our citizens. Thank you.
See the manager writing a note. You folks in the back have been sitting here all night. Did you have something you wanted to talk about? You are, okay, all right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Uh, fair enough. Uh, city manager, did you have any comments?
Uh, I'll try to keep them brief. Um, I just want you to know that the final touches to Southwest Fifteenth Avenue, hopefully they were supposed to happen this last weekend, we got rained out. Hopefully they will happen this week. Uh, I, I heard everything the residents said from the first public workshop that happened three years ago, where we walked up and down and we invited people to give their feedback uh, about that boulevard and, and the concepts, to the door knockers that we walked up and down and put on everybody's door, to the videos that we, to the videos that I stood in the middle of the street posting. I've had, I've had some of you guys out there posting. Uh, we have done our absolute best. We got the, the electronics sign for M.A.S.O., we got the yard signs. Um, we've, we've done everything we could do to talk to people on that street, let them know what's going. I do believe that when the, the center lane, the stacking lane for the elementary school is complete and it's all the way up and down, and we're able to get, uh, folks off the right and the left-hand lane, I think we'll see a significant difference. I don't know that there's anybody that goes in that traffic that's not trying to get out of Newberry Oaks to work or trying to drop their kids off, so I think everybody that's there has a reason to, to be there at that point in time. And what you guys are trying to do is help this whole town get to the middle school and the elementary school to drop their kids off and then be, and help the neighborhoods there be able to get back out. It's also one of the reasons why you just moved forward on that road segment to try to create a north-south connection to get folks out there. Uh, are you gonna speak to the Tallahassee today? I'll leave that one to you. Uh, and then I just want to remind everybody that we are fast approaching hurricane season. We've had a couple of, uh, tropical storms that have gone to other places, right? But it's never too early to fill up the, the five-gallon gas tank, make sure your generator works, uh, get the water, get the snacks, get all those things prepped so that when one is heading this way, you're not joining the crowd out there trying to get it in that moment. And to the AMI, uh, I couldn't agree more, uh, and I've already started taking steps with staff. But one of the reasons why our AMI has been so successful is the conservative, let's do one step at a time, let's get everybody trained, let's get it worked out before we take the next step. So it has taken a little bit. I believe we are ready to take the next step, and your staff is working in that effort. That concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Attorney?
No comments.
Uh, faux city clerk? Commissioner Coleman?
Um, the only thing I got is, uh, I think the mayor did a really good job at the, uh, football game the other night, uh, being out of town, and I got to watch the game and you did, uh, I tell you, man, I'm impressed. Did a really good job with that. Um, and, uh, um, I'm so glad y'all stayed tonight and, and I, I know it's gotta be tough being there on Fifteenth with all that construction, and hopefully we can get to the bottom of this.
I gotta give, I gotta give the coup, I'm sorry.
You already have five minutes. I'm sorry.
You just gotta stay with it.
Yes. I just wanna say that the construction people that did the work were Johnny-on-the-spot. They had the right equipment there at the right time and, and, and did their job. I mean, it wasn't that they, they didn't do their job.
Okay.
But, but my concern was, now, I don't know whose door he knocked on, but he did knock on mine.
Gotcha, gotcha. Commissioner Coleman, you ready?
I'm done, yeah.
I can just say God bless America and God bless our troops.
What time? Okay.
Eleven-twenty.
Hmm. I know, so, uh, got trivia question.
Really?
Yeah. Who was the only president of the United States that was never elected president nor was he elected vice president? I just dang it.
Hey!
She was beaten.
That was a quick answer, too.
That was great.
Commissioner Long?
Uh, I got a few things. Uh, one thing I keep hearing a constant is communication. Uh, we gotta find a better way to get most citizens, if not all citizens, on the right page of getting information out to them. Not saying we don't, I just keep hearing the same thing, so we gotta find a way of alternative methods to try to get more communication for our meetings and for construction, so people like these, these couple right here don't have that, uh, conflict. Another thing is, uh, tomorrow we have a meeting at Capricious for Thrive. It's a health initiative that we're trying to put together to make Newberry a healthier city. So whether you got information you wanna pass along as far as, uh, health fare for men's health, dental health, and just, just health in general, uh, October's coming about, so we wanna try to get something going pretty soon. So if you got time tomorrow, six o'clock until seven, come out, we'd love to hear from you. Um, other than that, uh, commend the mayor for the, uh, composure at the town hall meeting. That was kinda intense. But other than that, uh, have a great week.
Yeah, I only got one thing. Hey, so, 'cause I'm hearing, 'cause we had that intense, uh, um, fire assessment rate. Um, for the people that are listening that, that may not know this, the hardship, are you, can you explain that real quick, what it is and what it could do for those that are?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So you guys have funded and authorized any resident that has a hardship and can't pay. So one-page application, all they need to do is, is let us know. We can send the application to them, we can walk them through it, help them fill it out. Um, you guys have funded that and advertised it to Commissioner Long's point. I would love any suggestions of how to communicate with everybody because we, I don't know what else. I mean, I, I know that we do the text messenger and storm response. I, I'll look and see at a cost of doing text messages, 'cause I know the school board, um, clearly spends a fortune on ta, I get text messages from them about five times a day, almost to the point where people are complaining about the text messages, but I think that might help. But then you gotta communicate to the residents to sign up for the text messages at the same time, you know? So I mean, it's, it's a process and we'll keep doing it, but trying to get the information out to residents, I think a lot of that is also where the elected officials come in. You guys are, are talking with people, you just posting about it, talking to people about it, you know, as you say, hey, if you, if this is a hardship, we have a hardship for them. It's funded, you know, uh, they just, it's a one-page application, it's just so we can keep track of who gets it from year to year. Uh, I don't know that there's even stipulations that the same resident can't get it more than one year in a row. Uh, last year we only had one resident apply. Now, I think that's partly more towards the, they didn't know that they could apply, right? But I know that I have gone around neighborhoods knocking and trying to get people, uh, but, you know, life gets crazy and it's, it's tough to communicate. But that program is there, one-page, will help you walk, will help you fill it out.
Regarding that program, uh, uh, we do have a limited amount of money in, in that, so it's kind of a first-come, first-served thing and.
And there's, there are stipulations. There has to be a hardship. There has to be, you know, you have to show that you actually need it, but.
And I believe it's just, it was a one, one-time deal for one, one per citizen, but that could always change.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I did travel, as far as my comments today, I traveled to Tallahassee to attend the school board's, um, attempted appeal of the Charter Review Commission, uh, regarding our community charter school. Uh, they basically brought forth ten arguments against the CRC's decision, and, uh, the committee that heard it today, uh, found none of them to be worthy, so they lost on all ten, uh, items. The two biggest ones were, they were contending the vote and the committee did not agree. They validated the vote. Uh, then the other one was whether or not it was a municipal charter versus the community, uh, charter, and, uh, the committee found unanimously that the municipal did not apply. Uh, those ten decisions can be viewed in favor of our local parents who brought forth this petition and this charter conversion. Uh, so I'd love to say that it's done, it's over with, uh, but given the history of the board, they may try something else. I, I couldn't tell you. Uh, but I did also meet with the Commissioner of Education today, uh, personally, uh, to talk with him about some of, some concerns I had for a variety of different things, but just to kind of get you updated on that appeal, uh, from the board. Uh, and I thought that the, I would also, not that they'd ever hear it, but I would commend the, the commission, uh, for even allowing them to be heard, 'cause there really is no pathway for them to make an appeal, uh, but just for, I think, deliberation's sake, they gave it to them, but they still found every one of them to be unfounded. Um, given the interests of tonight, I didn't wanna belabor the discussions that are happening with regards to our city's celebration of our country's birthday next year, two-hundred-and-fiftieth, but I ask you to go check out the Facebook page, post that I put on my mayor's page, uh, that basically centered around three events, one in April, one in July, and one in September. Uh, and we are committed to, once again, finally have fireworks on July fourth in the city of Newberry.
Pyromaniac.
Pyromaniac.
Oh, yeah. Real quick.
This meeting is.
No, no, no. My condolences to Pat Post's mother.
Oh, yeah.
My condolences.
I didn't know if that was public information.
But it's death, buddy, come on.
Okay. What's that?
Nothing.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Stick around for the BOA.
Let's do it.
Uh.
All right, we're gonna, uh, convene this Board of Adjustment meeting for this lovely couple that has stayed so long. If you don't get past them, gonna cut all of them off. They won't be able to be. Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Uh, first item I need is an approval of the agenda.
Motion.
Motion is, uh, made and seconded by Maison and Long, Maison and Long. Is there any discussion on the approval of the agenda? Seeing none? Any from the public? Seeing none? All those in favor of approval of the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes unanimous. Uh, the second item is the approval of the minutes from the July twenty-eighth meeting. Uh, Commissioner Clark on the motion, Commissioner Maison on the second. Uh, if there's no discussion from the dais or the public, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. signify by saying aye. Motion passes unanimous. Tracy, keeping up, Frank? Yes, ma'am? No. Yep, yep. Any announcements? Seeing none. Uh, we'll move to public hearing and ordinances. We're gonna have a quasi-judicial, uh, related to Resolution 2531. Yeah, no problem. We had the approval of the agenda. Would somebody like to make a motion to amend the agenda? Motion's been moved and seconded? To amend the approval of the agenda? It's been moved and seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Maison. All those in favor of amending the previously approved agenda, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes unanimous. So I'm going to number three instead of number two. Uh, this is also a quasi-judicial where the Board of Adjustment will serve as a modified judicial body, uh, so we stop being a legislative body, uh, which does mean that we have to follow certain rules and adhere to a different standard of decision-making. Primary rule must follow concerns, testimony, and substantially competent evidence standard must be met when the judicial board makes a decision. Uh, Mr. Attorney, did we swear in these folks earlier tonight?
Yes.
You did?
Court of Appeals.
Okay, and very good. So we'll begin with the disclosure of the Expartee Communications and disclosure whether or not any member of the physically inspected property, Expartee Communications, or any conversations or transmissions of information that may have bearing on the influence of any voting member's decision. And I would like for you to disclose anything regarding item number two, which is quasi-judicial. The current item that we are about to entertain, the advanced auto parts side as well, and I'll start to my immediate right. Commissioner Maison? Commissioner, or Board Member Maison, no. Board Member Long? Board Member Farnsworth? Clark, Coleman? All right, seeing none. The order of presentations will be, uh, what I had read earlier tonight on the other quasi-judicials, and we'll begin with the staff overview. Mr. Jean-Paul, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Mayor. Um, the request before the board tonight is for a site and development plan for advanced auto parts in the Highland Park Plan Development. Uh, this was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board, uh, last Monday, August 18th, and, uh, there was a recommendation for adoption of the resolution approving the site and development plan. There are some, um, conditions that were applied to the approval just to address, um, some outstanding comments on the plan review that weren't able to be addressed before we brought it to public hearing. So, um, the dumpster enclosure, we just need a comparable design and building material to the primary building, so requirement of the code, so it's nothing, uh, extraordinary. Rooftop mechanical equipment needs to be screened, again, requirement of the code, nothing extraordinary there. Provide a maintenance agreement, uh, for the shared service road. I got one from Wawa this morning, um, I expect we'll get one for them as well, but that rear service road is all private, not public, um, and it's all individually owned in chunks, so we need something that demonstrates that there's gonna be a continuity and maintenance to that, uh, back road there. Site lighting shall be dark sky friendly, um, not necessarily in the code, um, it is in the PD though, um, and it is, uh, the will of the board in the past, so we'd like to carry that, uh, forward. Um, and during the PCB hearing, um, we did address the signage on the south facade, which faces the residential. Um, I think the intention was for it to not be there, since it's the service side of the building and there is no entrance there, uh, but ended up making it onto the elevations. Um, and again, in an effort to get this onto a public hearing, it wasn't time to address that. Um, in the discussion, the board did, uh, decide to make that sign a non-illuminated sign on the south side of the building. There may be other businesses that come forth that do have signage on the south side, um, and that may be something just to contemplate for future reference as well. Um, so the service road from, uh, some of the applicants have, uh, has been deemed to be kind of an essential entrance for their business, even though it's a service road, so, um, again, our recommended motion is to, um, adopt the resolution with the recommended conditions. Um, and the applicant's NV5 Global, owner's Newbury Plaza LLC, um, it's a 6,915 square foot auto parts store with related site improvements. It's about a 1.25 acre site. Um, it's located all along the south, uh, access ingress, uh, there. Sir?
Listen, this road, did that public?
It's the interconnectivity that runs parallel to the road that you see there essentially.
It i, it is a public road. Right, they, they will be able to get in and out. So you'll be able to turn in and go south past the business and use that utility, that service road. Are you, are you able to turn in and turn immediately on an interior service road?
Yeah, but you say we're gonna go through this every time about this not being a public road?
No, it's about the maintenance of it, and it's not publicly owned, and it's not gonna be dedicated to the city for maintenance, so it's gonna...
Correct.
Correct, for them, correct.
Right, it's not built to city standards, so we won't take ownership of it. Jay, all right, Jean-Paul, are you going?
It'll be like the HOA or some, something in there will take care of it.
Yes.
The CDD.
All right, um, this is just that a lot in plan view, so you can see it. This is the site plan. I'm gonna get, uh, zoom in a little bit so you can see the landscaping, parking lot layout, main entrance is, uh, that blue arrow there, and then, um, along the front part of the parcel, um, there's cross-access there as well, um, and similar agreements that we're asking for. Um, again, it's not gonna be something, hopefully, that we'll have to repeat, uh, but until they have something that they can provide us, we'd need to see it, so... Um, this is the service side of the building, um, the yellow part just being a pad for deliveries, and then the brown, um, being the dumpster enclosure. Uh, we didn't have elevations of that, but it sounds like they're already working on it. We're just looking for it before they, uh, we issue a building permit, so plenty of time to get that to us. Uh, these are the materials for the facade of the building, consistent with the overlay district, uh, red brick, stone, and then, um, some painted stucco, um, consistent with our corporate colors as well. Um, did my best to kinda demonstrate that with a black and white overlay. I didn't do it for all the, all the elevations. Uh, this is that south side, uh, the service side of the building, obviously nobody's going in there, uh, but yeah, it still has signage, so we're just asking that not be illuminated. Uh, this is the west elevation, this will face the access drive and just has a service exit, uh, service exit and a, a meter there. And this is the east side facing, uh, one of the vacant lots that'll come forward with development in the future. We did find it consists of the Confiscation Plan and Land Development Regulations. Uh, with those conditions, we are recommending approval. That completes my presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
This is the applicant, uh...
They don't have a presentation, but they're available for any questions.
Okay, all right, fantastic.
Mr. Mayor, I know it's late and I don't wanna belabor the point there. This question about signage on the south side was discussed at the P&amp;Z, and it was discussed that whatever you do for one, you have to do for the rest of them. I don't think that's true. I think some of them will have a south way, a south interest, this does not. Uh, but I also think that the reason the P&amp;Z asked for a non-illuminated south-facing sign was cause they were picturing this big, bright sign that was shining right into people's houses on the other side. On that service road, there are those big, huge concrete lights that are separating the buildings from the residents. So I'm, I'm not sure that having illuminated sign is necessarily the nuisance, uh, concern. There's 500 feet in between, and again, that service road is gonna have the two big concrete lights. So I don't, I don't have heartburn about illuminated or non-illuminated, but I want everybody to be clear that the houses are a significant distance away from these businesses, and if the issue is, is light, all the lights will be dark sky friendly. It is possible to have a gently illuminated sign that at least you can see the sign, but is not a big, bright neon flashing, those kinds of things. So first advice, whatever you do tonight does not bind you to any of these other lots, cause every lot's gonna have to be considered separately, uh, but if the consideration is the light for the residents, they're a pretty good piece away from where these businesses are going to be.
Illuminated, cause that's how it came.
The original request was for illuminated, uh, was, uh, to some degree.
These houses are gonna know they're buying behind commercials.
And there is, will be landscaping in between as well.
I don't have heartburn with it. You know where you're buying when you buy these houses.
Any public comment? Seeing none? Uh, any other, just any other, uh...
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead.
It's late.
It's a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Newbury, Florida, serving as the Board of Adjustment of the City of Newbury, Florida, approving an application for site and development plan where a 6,915 square foot auto parts store known as Advanced Auto Parts within the Highland Park Plan Development pursuant to Section 14.12 of the City of Newbury Land Development Regulations on lands identified as a portion of Elatcha County, the tax parcel number is 01932-000-000, consisting of approximately 1.25 acres more, particularly described in Exhibit A, line within the corporate limits of the City of Newbury, Florida, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing an effective date. Appropriate motion is passed, Resolution 202537 SDP 25-04, upon its reading by title only.
Any other questions from the board of the applicant or staff? No, sir. Okay, and City Attorney, please advise of the decision-making body, the applicable law and factual findings, it must be approved. We have a recommended motion, uh, with a couple of conditions. The only one in question is potentially whether or not you want to affirm the lighting or not lighting on the sign. No problem with it? No problem with it?
Illuminating of the, of the sign. It'll be a CBD anyways, right?
All right, so the... No. Eliminated, so shall not be illuminated is not accepted by the board, so we just eliminate that. They're not accepting the recommendation to, or from the, from the PCB. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Did you get a motion? You got a motion?
No, I did not. I'm sorry. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Clark and a motion from Commissioner Long. If there's no further deliberations, then all those in favor signify by saying aye. The ayes have it unanimous. Uh, let's go back to number two. Are you number... Thank you all.
Thank you for paving the road.
You are welcome.
Should've stood up earlier, but I'm thankful for it. I've been driving that same way eight years myself, dropping all kids and I'm...
Gotcha. All right, thank you all. So let's, uh, let's hop back to, uh, item number two, variance on a minimum lot size for a property in the Agricultural Zoning District, quasi-hearing 2531. Uh, staff overview?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Jean-Paul Perez with the Community Development Department. Before I get into the presentation, uh, last month we had a very similar request for a Nathan Meth, uh, the proprietor of the, um, Solange Tacos property. Um, this is a very similar request from Daniel Shore, owner of Shore Builders, um, and it's a, just a parcel that he would like to split, um, and after the split, doesn't meet the minimum five acres because of a right-of-way taking, and so we're addressing this through the variance process. In the future, we're hoping to adopt, um, something in the, uh, Code of Ordinances so we can do this stuff administratively. Um, well, yes, it doesn't meet the minimum, um, it does, uh, meet the spirit of the rule, um, and is subject to circumstances outside of their control, so, um, we can save the board some time and us some time to writing reports.
Let the record reflect, there's no public in the, in the meeting anymore, so if there's any discussion through, of the board for staff, seeing none. Could you please read the ordinance, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. This is a resolution of the City Commission, serving as the Board of Adjustment of the City of Newbury, Florida, approving a variance as authorized under Section 3.2.5 of the City of Newbury Land Development Regulations for reduction of the minimum lot size required in an agricultural A zoning district pursuant to Section 4.4.6 of the City of Newbury Land Development Regulations on certain lands within the City of Newbury, Florida, consisting of 9.6 acres, and more particularly described in Exhibit A, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing an effective date. Appropriate motion is passed, Resolution Number 20251, BAR 25, as read by title.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Commissioner Long and Commissioner Maison on the second? Second.
I was first.
I thought you were first.
I was first. You getting us mixed up?
No.
Okay.
If it's gonna be less than five acres, how many acres will it be?
4.6. It's 4.6.
4.6, okay.
Uh, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. Back to number four, we have a Resolution 25-40 SE 1501, a special exempt, exception renewal for Gatorback, uh, with just a couple of minor tweaks. This is now going back into legislative, uh, hearing, correct? Yes. Madam Hectis, you have the floor. Stacy with an E.
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, so I'll give you a little history here. I know it's late, but 215, 2015, you, uh, the commission approved, uh, the 230-acre private recreation sports tourism facility known as Gatorback Cycle Park. Uh, a part of that approval is a condition to bring it back to you every five years to take a review of it, to make sure everything is, uh, copasthetic out there. No problems with code enforcement. We do a check, we did a check with code enforcement. Uh, they did have a minor, um, change in their site plan, which I will show you here, um, shortly. This is the original approved plan back in 2015. I hate it, cause it's not to scale, but there is more parking that they're adding over on that one side there that's much larger, but it's not to scale. It's, yes, this, that is not to full...
This is where it's located, but this is how, how big this is.
Yes, it's much smaller than that actual is, and they've taken out the mountain biking, so there's no more mountain biking. They made the, the diamond park there on the bottom right, yes, a little bit bigger to where the, it ate up some of the mountain bike park. That was the only major ch, oh, sorry. The other change was they, um, located their appropriate location of the, um, approved, um, shed, I'm sorry, pole barn for the food, um, area. That's correct. And then they relocated, uh, the water tanks in a better, yep, better location. Fire department was the only one that had any real concerns, and they just wanted to make sure that they can get their vehicles in and out, and I believe Jason's here tonight. He can tell you that they've, uh, they've talked to the fire, the Gatorback folks. They actually wanna do a training session out there, so I think it might be a mutual good, um, partnership there that they can go out and do some training, um, on the site for in event of emergency. Those right there are the conditions stated, um, a little bit bigger than what's on your actual paper, so you might actually be able to read it. But the approved parking, as I, I mentioned, the gallon, the tanks have been moved and, or relocated in the pole barn, um, that's already permitted. They actually went through and permitted it for the site, um, cause they knew people would be under it, so they're good to go on that. Our recommended motion, I have two, so I would like you to choose, and I know it's a very late evening. Um, one is to approve Resolution 2025-40 for the renewal of the Gatorback Cycle Back, Cycle Park, uh, update to include the revision site plan and future approvals to be done administratively. If I, if you decide to do it administratively, I'll have to update the resolution, or that means staff would have to take a look at these. If there's anything major, we would bring it back to you, but if it's completely minor, like something like this, then you wouldn't have to see it. That's up to you all. If staff wanted to give you the option. Any others, just to go ahead and adopt it.
Mr. Attorney, could you read 2540?
Yes, sir. This is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Newbury, Florida, serving as the Board of Adjustment... serving as the Board of Adjustment of the City of Newbury, Florida, considering the five-year renewal of special exception SE 15-01 as authorized by, is in Section 12.1 of the City of Newbury Land Development Regulations, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing an effective date. Appropriate, um, motion is to pass Resolution SE 15-01, upon its reading by title only.
It was the pleasure of the Board.
The first is administrative approval.
We have a motion and a s- from Commissioner Long and a second from Commissioner Coleman to assert the recommendation, uh, recommended motion number one, which essentially gives the, uh, staff the authority to approve all similar renewals. Anything major would still come back to the Board. Uh, so, as long as we all understand the Board, if there's no further discussion, if there's no further discussion, uh, all those in favor signify by saying we're done.
Well, we're done?
Motion passes unanimous. We are, uh, any topics for the members to discuss?
Yes, just thank you to the chief for just jumping up and running the check in the back.
Great job.